It's October the 27th, 2020. This is a work session. I would ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Yes, Councilor is Judith Chandler.
Present.
John Chada.
Here.
Julie Wolfe.
I did.
Thank you. Still muted, Julie.
Yeah, that's the last.
Ms. Woolbrook.
Here.
Steve Brenner. Mayor Proton Nancy Fortune.
Present.
Mayor John Graham.
Also present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have two discussion items tonight. The first is a discussion of indemnification relative to Senate Bill 20-217. Presenting tonight will be what Chief Churchill and also Catherine Sellers. She's an attorney associate of Jeff Parker's. So the city clerk could please bring those people over.
On their way.
Okay, great. Hi Catherine.
Hi, how are you mayor?
Good. Yourself?
Good.
Welcome to Manitu. Just we'll let the chief check in here. Hi Chief. Great. So, okay, the presentation will be from the chief and from attorney sellers. Who would like to start off?
I can, if that's okay Brian.
Yes ma'am, please do. There's a bit of a curveball thrown into this from all my research and reading through this, it is very complicated. So I would love for the city attorney's office to discuss this first.
All right. So as you may recall, we had a presentation, it's been a couple of months now on the new Senate Bill 20217. And as part of that, we talked about the civil liability that's created in the bill, the new civil liability statute. And as we discussed before, it looks very similar to a 1983 claim with a couple of exceptions. And one exception is that qualified immunity, which is a procedural bar to bringing a 1983 claim is not allowed. You can't raise that issue. And in addition, there are some provisions regarding the employer and the employer's indemnification of the officer. So as you remember, hopefully, the civil liability section of that new bill does not permit the entity to be sued. So it's only the officer that's named. So it's got a provision related to the employer. And that provision requires the employer to indemnify. And there's two exceptions to that. And we're really going to focus on the first exception, which is the when an employer finds that the officer did not act in a good faith and reasonable belief, that the action was lawful. And two is the criminal, the officer is criminally convicted and the employer does not, that's actually discretionary indemnification. The employer may or may not indemnify if the officer's convicted. So back to the first exception, it's got this language in there about an employer determination. And if the employer makes that determination, that good faith and reasonable belief determination, the officer is liable for 5% or 25% of the ultimate judgment or settlement amount. And the statute, it's a bit odd because it doesn't actually require the employer to make this determination. It doesn't tell you when you need to make this determination. It doesn't tell you how you make this determination. And in reality, it doesn't tell you who the employer is. And so as we talked about a couple of months ago, you know, I suggested that you might want to have a separate session on this issue alone to make a couple of determinations and give direction to staff in our office as to how you wanted to proceed. And I think the two questions for you tonight are, do you want to create a written policy that tells the city how these decisions will be made? And by the city, I mean you all and future councils and the chief and future chiefs and law enforcement. And you know, you don't have to make a policy. There's nothing that requires you to do so, but you can. And if you do want to have a policy, what do you want that policy to look like? And we made a couple of suggestions in the memo, but we can talk more in detail about what those kinds of things would look like. As mentioned in the memo that we sent you, there's a lot of issues with the city council making this decision. And it's our assumption that the employer is in fact the city and you are of course that physical manifestation of the organization. You run it. And so there's a lot of issues with the city council making that decision. There's an open meetings issue. There's a possibility that, you know, you're still indemnifying the officer and you frankly, you know, as a litigation strategy may or may not want to make a determination in an open meeting about whether or not an officer acted unlawfully or not, in your opinion, because it may affect how the case goes, it may affect settlement, and your defense counsel may say, I really wish you wouldn't do that. So that's, those are a couple of issues for the governing body when they're making the decision. I think the other issue is, and I think Brian can probably elaborate on his concerns because I've heard them from several officers, is how is that decision made? What is the standard that is a good faith and reasonable belief? That's not defined under the statute. I don't anticipate it will be defined in the future. And so, you know, there's case law out there that, from the federal courts, that kind of talks about that a little bit. It hearkens to, you know, some cases, but there's no set case law that's going to tell us exactly how that's going to work. And frankly, there's nothing that binds you to that case law in the statute anyway. So, you know, it's a little bit of, I think it makes a lot of law enforcement officers uncomfortable. I don't want to speak for them as to, you know, what is my employer gonna, how's my employer gonna make this decision about something that I do? So that's kind of the overview. And I think the kind of two things, the two things that I'd like to see you focus on tonight, I'm sure you have other questions, but those are, I think, the direction that we're looking for this evening is how you want to move forward. And this doesn't have to be the final conversation on this at all. You can keep, you can come back to this later. It's nothing that's going to be set in stone. And I think I mentioned this during the training, and I mentioned this to the training to the PD when I came down, is we fully anticipate that there will be proposed amendments to this bill. And so things may shift and change. And part of what might shift and change is this section of the bill, and especially how it relates to the Governmental Immunity Act, which is part of the reason I gave you a little bit context of what governmental immunity looks like compared to this liability section and those provisions. So you could kind of understand. So from what I'm hearing currently is there is a proposed amendment. We don't know how successful it will be to, in the works anyway, to eliminate the prohibition on the applicability of the Governmental Immunity Act. So that would bring back those immunities in that act. So can't tell you how that's going to play out. We're still a few months away from the beginning of the session. So I guess we'll see. So, so that being said, happy to answer any questions or however the mayor would like to move forward.
I think maybe it'd be good to give the police chief a chance to speak and then we could perhaps entertain questions at that point. Chief, did you have comments?
A few things, sir. I can tell you of Senate Bill 27 thing, the one thing in there that really does have a chilling effect on law enforcement when it comes to retention and recruitment is this section of that bill. And it is worrisome for any officer out there trying to do a job on behalf of a city or a county to have a worry that there may come a time when a lawsuit may come against them and they be fat and maybe on the receiving end of the liability for their actions. That being said, I believe the way the bill is written is, is you would really have to be far outside your scope of employment and be willful and wanton for this to happen to you. However, that is the reality of this bill, the effect that it's had on it. I need, I would like to compliment our city attorney's office, Catherine Sellers and Jeff Parker. I, when I began my research into this, the question was, who is the employer and who makes the decision as to indemnify? I reached out to the Colorado Associations of Chiefs of Police and other area chiefs and law enforcement agency saying, and to a department, the answer was, we're going to handle this the way we always handle it. And that will be the city attorney's office and SIRSIA would bring the information to city council, who's the employer. And they would, on advice of city council, city attorney, make the decision on indemnification. However, if you've been able to read through the memo provided us by Jeff Parker's office, they have thought this through on all of the contingencies that could come to bear on that process of being public, it highly, highly political, and all that entails. I read through it again tonight and had to go back through it a couple of times just to try to get a grasp on what they were saying. My one worry is though, as the chief of police, this was when I received this on the 23rd, it was a bit of a curveball in that it places a lot, large part of the decision on the chief of police, which would concern me being appointee that I would suddenly find myself between a hard rock and a hard place if the city did not believe the individual officer should be indemnified, and I did. Or even if I didn't, the police department would. And then I become the focus of that scorn or rage or, you know, the political inhospitality of what that would bring. I would either make one side very unhappy or the other side very unhappy. And it puts me kind of in a bad spot. So this was the first time I had heard of the chief of police being put in a position. I can tell you by the time we would get to the point where we're looking at indemnification, we would probably already have done a internal affairs investigation and I would have already decided whether or not the officer was within scope and willful and wanton or not. And I think it may become difficult if the city, if the police department has found the officer within the scope of their employment and within policy, and then a civil court find would find them outside of policy. And then the question comes back to me as to which way I would determine. I know that there, there are a few other people involved in that decision making process from our attorney's office. But this was, this was new on me and to other chiefs I talked to. So I definitely welcome an opportunity as we move forward. And it is a consensus that this bill may change. And this may be the part that does change. But as we move forward to sit down together and work this through.
Anything else Chief?
No, sir. Catherine, did you have anything to, I mean, you and I haven't had a chance to talk and I only had one opportunity to talk with Jeff Parker since this came out. But.
No, and I think the delegation of the chief is just a suggestion. It's just something we've seen other clients do. It's not something Manitu has to do at all. But as the chief mentioned, you know, a lot of times, and but sometimes there'll be an internal investigation and sometimes there won't. But if there is one, the chief will already address this issue through the internal investigation. And I think that's why some chiefs have kind of liked that so they're not being second guessed within their own organization. But it's just a suggestion. It's not anything you have to, you have to adopt.
And as we move further, I wrote up a, prior, prior to receiving this memo that changed to the employer decision, who the decision maker would be, I had written up a memo with two options on it. One, that the city attorney and SIRSIA make the notification to city council and then they make the ultimate decision. And the second half of that is something that I was going to propose and advocate for with that the officer, should it come down to a time and place where the city council was to make a decision on indemnification, that the officer would have the right to make a hearing request before city council and bring an attorney or advisor of their choosing to present their side of the case so that a, an elected body, elected from the citizens of Manitu, who speak for the citizens of Manitu, could hear an officer's side of the story from a legal mind and a legal perspective that may help you make a decision as to which way to decide. My past history, I've, I've seen, I've seen it go, I've seen that happen. I've seen that type of process take place. And I've seen it go both ways, where a chief of police, the city attorney and the mayor all have recommended an officer to be fired. But when that officer was allowed to bring an attorney and present their case before the selected civilian review board, that board sided with the officer because there's always two sides to a story that may not come out in a court or a civil trial. So I would be willing to work through maybe adding something like that in the future, even if I'm the one making the decision. I would like, in my mind, for an officer to have a fair and impartial body review the case. And I would like that officer to have the opportunity to present their case before the decision's made.
Thank you Chief. At this point, council, do we have questions for Catherine or for Chief Churchill? Any questions? Counselor Wolfe?
Thank you. This is a question for Catherine. And I'm sorry, I don't have the bill pulled up or the act, I should say. So can you refresh us, remind me what, under what circumstances does the act authorize or the third party to go after the officer individually? I guess another way to say that is, can you remind me, what is the standard for this liability to kick in? So yeah, the officer's liable for that portion of the judgment when the employer makes the decision that they did not act under a good faith and reasonable belief that their action was lawful. That's a verbatim. So in terms of jury instructions, then the jury is instructed that if the jury thinks the, under what circumstances can the jury go after an individual officer now? I just, I'm not clear on the scope of that waiver of the immunity act. Yeah. So the jury doesn't, the jury wouldn't be making that determination necessarily. What the jury would be deciding is whether or not the officer through their actions infringed on the constitutional rights of the individual protected under the Colorado Constitution. Now, obviously, those two questions are pretty close to one another. And so through the jury decision of whether or not there was an infringement, there could be a really good indication of whether or not the officer acted in a good faith and reasonable belief. I think a little bit is about timing. And, and I think that's kind of the issue is, when is this decision really being made? And I think that's a little bit open for, you know, the circumstances of a case. There may be a circumstance where, you know, the, the, it's a real, it's a real gray case and it's hard. The employer says, you know what, we don't want to make the decision now, whatever, we'll, we'll try the case. And the judgment comes back in favor of the individual, the plaintiff who brought the case. And then the employer could come back and say, okay, we have this jury verdict. They found that you infringed, you know, that you violated someone's constitutional rights. And we're going to find that you didn't act in a good face and reasonable belief based upon that. There's nothing that prohibits the employer from making that post judgment decision. That's a good reason why the decision should be made at the end, not at the beginning, right? Well, yeah, I mean, having this, having a public body come out and say, the officer didn't act in good faith and reasonable belief, if I'm plaintiff's attorney, I'm bringing that to court. That's going to be my, I'm going to put the, you know, the mayor and city council up there and ask you all why you thought of what you did. And so. Would that necessarily even be admissible though? Is it sort of like how you can't admit insurance coverage? Yeah, but I guess that's a question. Yeah, but yeah, that's pretty in-depth question. But I, you know, I could see them definitely trying it, trying to get that in. Yeah. So if we're going to even consider any kind of indemnification, it sounds like your office is advising that that determination being made by whomever, at the end, after we determine the outcome of the litigation or the outcome of the litigation from trial or from settlement with the plaintiff as opposed to us jumping in early on, it doesn't sound like there's real benefit to jumping in early on. Am I hearing you right? Yeah, I think that's probably the reality is there's really no benefit for the city to jump in early on and, and make a decision. I guess the one exception to that is, you know, if they, if the, if the body wants to make or the city wants to make a, you know, they're ready to settle for whatever amount and they're not taking it to trial and they want to make a political statement or some sort or something like that. But yeah, I think your defense counsel is going to be like, please don't, please don't do anything. I know. It's, it's almost funny. So with other cities that you're working with, is there a particular well-known respected body that tends to do investigations and situations where our own chief cannot, like, let's say our chief is being investigated? Is there a body, I don't feel comfortable with the DA doing it at all for lots of reasons. But is there considered some kind of neutral, reliable party? Because certainly council wouldn't be qualified to make that determination. I guess they could maybe make the final determination after they look at the, you know, jury verdict and stuff. But generally speaking, who, who would be qualified to make that decision if the chief were unable to do so or if he didn't feel comfortable? Um, so if that were the case, I think that we'd probably recommend, you know, one of the third-party private agencies that do internal investigations. There's no agency that would come in and do it or public body. But there are, we do have several private firms that we work with. Some are, their specialization is law enforcement. That's all they do. And we'd probably bring them in to do that.
Is Catherine?
Can I ask one last thing? Can I ask one more thing? Sorry. And then I'll give everybody else a turn.
Look here from the chief.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But is, I'm assuming their answer is no. But is there any insurance coverage that a private officer could purchase that would cover them in the event a determination has been made that they acted in bad faith? I can't imagine, but I figured I should ask. To my knowledge right now, no. But I think there is definitely a lot of conversation going on with law enforcement agencies and insurance companies to, to create that type of insurance. I will say that there's one part of the bill that says if the, if the judgment against the officer, the 25,000 or 5% is uncollectible, and that term is also not defined, then the entity pays it. So it comes back to the entity in the long run. So a lot, a lot of law enforcement aren't going to have 25 grand just lying around that they can pay. And it's a question whether the plaintiff wants to chase that 25 grand. Right. I guess it depends on whether they're sort of judgment proof or bankruptcy eligible or something. Hey, is this church dischargeable in bankruptcy? Do we know yet? Or is it too soon to know? I do not practice bankruptcy. I do not know. So.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Churchill, you had something to say?
I might be able to answer a couple of Counselor Wolfe's questions. Under Jeff Parker's memo and Catherine's memo, they addressed the fact of, what if it's me you're making the decision on? And they said if it came down to that, it would be the city administrator, the city attorney and SIRSIA making the decision regarding indemnification?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that. That's why I asked the question.
Chief was speaking Julie.
Oh, sorry. I thought he was done.
Chief, did you have more to say?
Well, I was just saying that, that's what their memo outlined. And then on the question of insurance, can an officer buy insurance? I know the Fraternal Order of Police is working on that right now. And if you're a member of the FOP, when this comes together, like this is all brand new. But when the insurance policy becomes available for this exact type of situation, as part of your dues, if you want to pay a little extra, there is a policy that will protect an officer through your membership with them. And we've been solicited by another attorney group in regards to possibilities for that coming up and creation of trust funds and things like that on how to protect yourself.
Do other counselors have questions? Mayor Proton Fortune?
Yeah. Thank you for the insurance question. Because I was gonna, that was one of, I thought it might be a stupid question, but I was going to ask it anyway. And as it turns out, it was a appropriate question. So if memory serves me, this particular section is not yet in effect. Am I correct in that?
No, it's in effect.
It currently is in effect. So other cities do in fact have policies that they've put in place?
A couple. We have one client who's put one into place. And of course, I think you heard probably Greenwood Village kind of went the other way and said, we're going to indemnify no matter what. And that was kind of their policy, their public statement that they, they adopted. Other than that, we haven't heard too much about formal policies being put in place at this point.
Okay. Well, darn, I was hoping that we had some time, but we don't. Thank you.
The counselors, do you have questions or comments? I see mostly heads shaking. Okay. All right. So I think we need, we need to kind of give direction tonight. And then, because we have two questions. And as I understand, and I'm certainly not an attorney, is we need to define who the employer is and how we're going to handle the indemnification. I noticed on page five of the brief provided by, by the attorney's office, the recommendation was to delegate authority regarding indemnification to the police chief with two exceptions. First exception would be in cases where you had excessive force. In that case, the police chief, city administrator, city attorney and SIRSIA would make the decision regarding indemnification. The second exception would be if the police chief is directly involved in the actions being evaluated. In that case, the city attorney and city attorney and SIRSIA would make the determination regarding indemnification. And I believe the chief had mentioned that. So I don't mean to be overly repetitive. Counsel, that's the attorney's recommendation. I think this is a brand new area of law. It's without a whole lot of, doesn't really have a track record. And it sounds like everybody figures it's going to change. Would, would council be fairly comfortable with those recommendations? Or do you have concerns? Mayor Proton?
Given the chief's stated concerns, I think I would like to see staff come back with two or three options. And one of the options being what Jeff in his office has proposed, and then the pros and cons of those options. I, as the chief so eloquently stated when he started, this is incredibly complex. For those of us who aren't attorneys, it is even more challenging. So I'd like just a little bit more, I'm not quite ready to go with our council's recommendation yet. That's my thought. Those are my thoughts.
Counselor Chandler?
Yeah, I agree. I read the document three times. And I don't know that the second two times that I read it gave me any more information, not having a lawyer's mind. However, I did really hear what Chief Churchill said about, you know, the, not only by the time it gets to indemnification, you know, certainly some decisions have been made with regards to whether that's necessary. And I agree with Mayor Protem Fortune. I'm not ready either to, to make this decision. I do think we need to look at some other options before we, we take that next step.
Counselor Wolfe?
I prefer that it say that the indemnification decision be made by one of these independent investigation companies that the attorney mentioned. That way, the chief isn't on the hook to have to scrutinize his own people. His employees are kind of like his family. It just, it takes him off the hook. And also, those are specialists. And the chief specializes in lots of things. But he doesn't have to be a specialist in analyzing the gray area where not good faith crosses over into willful and wanton or what have you. So I like the idea of hiring it out. And hopefully, it won't be too expensive because hopefully, we won't have this come up a lot. And then simultaneously, keep abreast of the insurance issue because I would have imagined, you know, I think it's great that the chief is aware of the Fraternal Order of Police plans. But I just imagined that there would be some collective or group that would want to pull their money, you know, with insurance coverage for each other for some relatively nominal fee. And if that insurance becomes available to us, we as a city might even decide to purchase that and pay for it for the employee. On the other hand, we may not want to encourage our employees to think that there's no problem if they go around violating people's constitutional rights because we'll pay for it. So I realize there's a little policy philosophy to discuss there. But bottom line is, I'd prefer that we hire out or sub out, however you say that, to the private companies to do any kind of investigation. to do any kind of investigation on the indemnification issue, and that it be done at the end of the third-party litigation.
Thank you, Counselor Wolf. Chief Churchill, it looks like you have a response.
On on two things. One, I think my past practice has shown that I'm more than willing to make a decision regarding the fate of one of my employees and stand up for what I believe. My concern was when my education, my belief as the chief of police does not coincide with political pressure or a civil court. Um, number two, I believe it's, I believe it's Monument. City Council in Monument, I think, don't hold me to that, but I think that's who it is, has set aside but money in their budget for exactly the proposal that uh Counselor Wolf has suggested that when such policy does become available, the city uh will pay for that. I think Monument said they put ten thousand dollars in the budget to buy the insurance policy to cover the officers.
Other counselors, do you have questions or comments or questions? Mr. Shada?
On page four, I believe that um the Governmental Immunity Act, I and I I guess I'm asking the attorney for this, that we um that the city and our insurer has an exposure of about three hundred and fifty to nine hundred and fifty thousand. Can you help parse that parentheses here?
Yeah, so governmental immunity doesn't apply here. But in general, for under governmental immunity, there is a cap, and those caps are prohibited under under this new civil liability. So a single person or one person in a single occurrence, the max is three fifty. And then an injury for two or more persons in a single occurrence is nine fifty. So that's the differences there on those.
Okay, now, you said that in this particular case here, the GIA doesn't apply to this?
That's correct, not currently.
Not currently? Okay.
That's one of the changes I expect to see proposed is to have those caps and the immunity under the GIA re-imposed.
Well, I guess, um, so of course, that's going to have to be a change by the General Assembly and a signature by the governor, correct?
Yep.
Okay. And uh I can't imagine how there isn't going to be a lot of pressure on the part of the General Assembly by um uh local governments to put that in place. Would you agree?
Yeah, I think there's a pretty significant push to see that put back in place.
Well, and so now I'm curious about the stance that Greenwood Village took in terms of essentially not with this withstand, not with this being in place. Do you know, are you, are you familiar with that?
So in general, my understanding is they basically said we're going to indemnify every officer under every occurrence period.
So are they just doing that as self-insurance or something?
No, I think they're, I think they're insured by the SIRSa like everybody else, if that's what you're asking. Um, they're just, they're, they're just basically saying like, we're not going to make this good faith, reasonable belief determination. We're just going to indemnify the officer on every circumstance, period.
I guess to me, that's where I'm um thinking is that um I think until the General Assembly kind of clarifies that, I think it's our responsibility as a city, um as a council, to hire the best people that do not act in any kind of willful or wanton manners as, and I'm just trying to extract words out of, I believe Catherine's memo um to us. Um, I think in a sense, this takes us a little bit off the hook not to hold our employees to the highest standards. And if they're in our employ, I think we ought to make that assumption.
Do we have the comments? Okay, because one of the questions I believe was, do we want to have a written policy on this?
Yes.
I don't know, I don't know, we, we do want to have a, I'm sorry, who said yes? I mean, it looks like.
Yes, that's one of the questions.
Oh, that's why, yes, one of the questions. Didn't make it any easier, did you?
Sorry.
No, that's fine, that's okay. That's all right. I guess, counsel, okay, uh, Counselor Wolf?
I know what it's like to apply for a a job as a police officer. But if I pretend I'm applying for a police officer job, I think I'd like to know what my potential liabilities are. Not that I'm planning on, you know, putting my hand down anyone's pants or doing anything, you know, illegal or constitutionally unallowed. But I think our police should know what the rules are and whether we're going to cover them or not. Or if so, what does it depend on and who's going to decide? So I like the idea of having a policy. It doesn't sound like there's any huge, huge rush, but um I think it's a good idea so that um those employees know where they stand.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Wolf. Uh, Mr. Shada?
I guess I would like to suggest that until we have a different policy, that we go in the direction of Greenwood Village, that we basically make a determination immediately so that our employees know exactly where they stand.
Okay, I see a couple of head nods in response there. Um, maybe if I could just kind of get a a sense, I mean, who all kind of thinks that, you know, is in favor of what Mr. Shada just remarked?
I didn't understand what he said, so I can't vote.
Well, well, okay, let's, let's ask, okay, and I just, what I'll do is I'll ask uh Councilman Shada to repeat his remarks. And then if that sounds, we'll, we'll just kind of take a showing hands to see who thinks that's a good idea. You know, and we can look for other ideas, too. So John, could you restate what you said?
I guess I suggest that we indemnify our employees to the maximum extent possible, essentially that we make that policy that we're not going to put any of our employees in a position where we do it early or in the middle or late, or whether they're out there having to find extra insurance and all this other kind of stuff. I think that I think we ought to move ahead um right now and be the most protective with our employees under the assumption that our staff and our council, that if there are any bad apples in the bunch, that we are getting rid of them immediately. And that that we make the assumption that we have good faith employees in our employ. And then if somebody can find a better policy that could convince me to change my mind, I would consider it. But I think we ought to do that almost immediately because I think it's a morale issue to our employees. And I think um this just opens up. I realize our exposure might be small, but if that's the particular case, and it sounds like to me the attorney is saying that if we make that policy determination, SIRSa um then would back us up. Is that not correct, Catherine? I'm sorry.
Oh, I can't, I can't speak for SIRSa. I'm not sure they weigh in on that, actually. They're going to take each case individually. So um, yeah, I I don't want to say that for them.
Okay, all right. So I guess what I'm saying is, okay, I completely understand how you don't want to represent SIRSa in this. I guess what I'm saying, in our particular situation, it might mean, oh, so I guess I want to get clear. Our exposure is not under those limits of GIA?
Correct, you have unlimited exposure.
So we could be exposed to, um, so, so in the worst possible case, SIRSa might not cover it, correct? It's possible, right?
Well, I think your coverage for SIRSa, I mean, you obviously need to talk to them. But yeah, I think they're gonna, they're gonna give you coverage now the payout of a an enormous settlement, you know? That's something to discuss with them. I don't know what your insurance coverage is, but if you had a ten million dollar case, I assume that your insurance policy would cover that, and they would pay that ten million dollars. But I think that's probably a question for your city administrator to maybe discuss with SIRSa.
I guess I would like to propose that we go ahead and and have good faith in our employees and do essentially, as near as I can tell, and I'm sorry, I don't have, I I, 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 I don't, I can't find really quickly at my fingertips what Greenwood Village did here. But it sounds like to me they did, in my opinion, the right thing by their employees. That doesn't mean that in two months or three months or four months that we can't come up with a better policy. But it seems like to me we ought to do the very best we can, given the knowledge we have here, instead of waiting around. I just, I just am uncomfortable leading our employees in this limbo.
May I comment on that before we vote? Or?
Yeah, you can, Julian, just, and just, just to, to be clear, I mean, this is a work session, so we're not, we're not, we're not going to have a binding vote, but I think we do kind of want to have a a sense of direction.
Right.
I'm sorry, John, were you saying?
So I, so I guess I want to clarify that currently, right now, there is no GIA for this type of exposure. And is that not correct?
That is correct. There's no GIA applicable to this claim.
And I guess I'm willing to kind of go out on a limb, okay? And and say that somehow or another, our insurance company and kind of the full faith of the city of Manato Springs is going to, if I I have a question for you, because there is no GIA, can we set a limit?
Sure.
Okay. That's determined by the court.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, um, yeah, Counselor Wolf?
Thanks. Um, this is for you again, Catherine. Um, it's, I just want to make sure I'm following this conversation correctly. It's my understanding that if the police department gets sued, if we get sued because of some actions of the police department, SIRSa will cover us pursuant to whatever our insurance coverage is. The new issue here is the twenty-five thousand dollar indemnity per officer thing. That's the new part of the law, that we don't know if that twenty-five thousand, if if SIRSa, SIRSa is going to offer a policy for that particular twenty-five thousand dollars that may be um on the required of the officer to pay, or whether we can get that through other coverage. In other words, we're just talking about the twenty-five thousand per officer here, right? Not the half a million dollars. We're, we're not talking about the general liability limits. We're just talking about for the officer himself. Is that right?
Correct, so if you were to get a judgment against you for ten million dollars, and you decided that you made a determination that the officer did not act in good faith and reasonable belief, that officer is still only liable for twenty-five grand, and the city or the SIRSa is going to cover you for the nine million and change that.
Right, okay, thank you for clarifying. So in that case, I like John Shada's suggestion, except I would tweak it by saying, let's talk to SIRSa first. Because, I mean, if we're going to take on a hundred thousand dollar liability just to cover four potential officers, and we're going to set aside a hundred grand in our budget for that, that's fine. But let's find out if it's even possible to have it covered because if SIRSa tells us that they're, you know, they're going to add a rider to our policy and for an extra, you know, ten grand or for an extra twenty cents or whatever, they'll also add the liability coverage for the officer, the twenty-five thousand. Then it's very, it's much easier for us to make that financial determination. So I'd like to know if we can get coverage for what, which John has suggested, rather than it coming out of our general fund before we get too much more serious about it. So if, you know, maybe Denise um feels comfortable talking insurance lingo and asking them, um, is there going to be coverage that we can purchase from you guys uh for the uh potential jury verdict against any of our officers saying that they were in bad faith, and they have to pay twenty-five thousand dollars of this? And then we'll have more information to make our decision. Just a suggestion.
John? Mr. Shada? Julie, it seems like to me the phrase that catches me, and I'm on, I I know you might not have this up because I have my kind of my widescreen here. On page four of the October twenty-third memo, in some, in kind of roughly kind of the second paragraph, okay? It says, um, moreover, although damages are capped under the Governmental Immunity Act and not under Senate Bill twenty-two seventeen, a law enforcement officer has more exposure under GIA. If found to be acting in a willful and wanton manner and therefore not entitled to immunity by the employer, an officer could be liable for the full damages available under the GIA.
I think that those full damages under the GIA, Catherine, isn't that limited to the twenty-five grand?
Yeah, and maybe I should clarify that a little bit better. So the the point that we are trying to show is, is that if the GIA um came back into force here, or if this statute didn't exist, or the GIA applied to it as it exists today, that officers would have much more exposure under the GIA in Colorado if they were found to be willful and wanton than they do under Senate Bill twenty-two seventeen. Right now, under two seventeen, the max for an officer's exposure is twenty-five grand. But if an officer is found to have been willful and wanton under the GIA, if it applied, which it doesn't, but if it did, they could be liable for the full three hundred and fifty thousand dollars all by themselves with no city involvement. And so, sorry if that was confusing. I apologize.
Data? Mr. Shada?
So I guess that, so then, um, okay, so I guess maybe I was very confused about what was going on in that paragraph. So just to clarify this, that as we stand right now, we could, or in theory, what Greenwood Village did is they went ahead and backstopped their employees to their maximum liability they could have under this Senate bill, which is twenty-five thousand. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I would like us to move ahead and do then that immediately. I think there's no question in my mind that that is something, and I think if that came up, we can take that out of contingency.
Okay, so I guess I'll ask counsel and just kind of want to get a a sense of direction. What Mr. Shada's proposing is we, I think, provide uh maximum protection to our officers uh as quickly as possible. Uh, I suppose with this, we we've got other questions to consider. For instance, do we want a written policy and whatnot? But for the moment, if we can just get a a sense of of direction, what you all feel like, i- if you're trending towards the direction Mr. Shada's uh indicating, could you raise your hands?
Mayor, this is Counsel Wilbrook. Can I ask a question first?
Well, I'm sorry, sure, yeah, go ahead, Susan.
Well, I'm just wondering if it's possible to get comments from both Chief Churchill and our attorney, um, how they feel about this direction. So it's a little bit of a compromise, I think, between the Mayor Protem saying we need more time and more policies. Councilwoman Wolf has mentioned that in terms of reaching out to SIRSa. But also, basically, Councilman Shada has also said um that he's in favor of how Greenwood Village ha- handled this. And I don't know if the chief is willing to, you know, comment on how he feels about that policy and if the attorney has, you know, the pros and cons of that before we kind of make this end.
Okay.
You know, before we vote. Thank you.
No, I I understand. Yeah, okay, no, that, that's a good point, Counselor Wilbrook. Um, chief, could I, could we ask you to respond to uh Counselor Wilbrook's comments? What's your feelings?
I am absolutely for and applaud uh the motion by Counselor Shada for willing to um offer this like Greenwood Village did. You want to talk about a morale boost and an ability to retain and recruit officers. Any officer applying to this agency, and we're currently in the process to hire two that knows their city council fully supports them and will back them in the future, will help with recruitment and retention, and it will absolutely lift the morale of our agency. Further in, and I'm trying to learn through this, too. I believe that Counselor Shada's motion keeps us where we have always been in the past, where an officer is indemnified. Is that correct, Catherine? That that uh the the new state bill Is that correct, Catherine, that, that the, the new state bill allowed a state court claim under Colorado, an ability to sue in state court for constitutional violations, where in the past it was just federal court? So maybe, maybe I'm wrong. I'm reading, I'm reading the bill. I see Counselor Will shaking her head no, but it does. It opens up an ability for, for somebody to file tort claims more often in state court now. So officers have always been indemnified in the past. And Counselor Shade's motion is keeping us where we were and still opening the door for the new SB 217 law to create financial liability for an officer, an individual officer. I may be wrong. I've, like I said earlier, I'd like to sit down with the attorney and discuss this. But I absolutely applaud and thank Counselor Shade for his motion, and I support it.
Catherine, do you have comments in response?
Sure. So, I mean, just to clarify, I mean, it was always possible to bring a case against an officer under the GIA. It was very unusual because, probably because of the cap of damages, that's my guess. But, and so there were no damages under 1983, so they were primary 1983 claims is what we saw. So that just, that's just a function of the system and not really a measure of what someone could or could not do. As for taking a stance like Greenwood Village, you know, I think it has more, it's more of a policy decision for you all to make and less of a legal one. I guess the only thing I would say is if you ever wanted to, to not indemnify an officer or make this decision, you, you kind of put yourself a little bit in the corner if you have a written policy to do so. But from a legal perspective, it, it doesn't really have a whole lot of bearing. Our concerns were more if you're actually making these decisions in open session. That's where the, the legal perspective, that's where our concerns lie.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Chandler?
Well, I really am appreciative of this robust conversation after listening to everyone. First of all, absolutely, I am in favor of a policy. And secondly, I support Counselor Shade's movement to, to just, to, to make sure that, and also, you know, if it's supported by Chief Churchill, that we have a policy in place that we indemnify our officers. And that does not stop us from continuing to look at other options down the road and other, and, and policy changes. But I, I, I've come full circle. I think it's a, it's the best way to go forward.
To, to, to Mr. Shade's proposal, do we have any more comments or questions on that? And then kind of like to just take the, take counsel's temperature and see what we, what we direct, we're leaning towards. Counselor Wolf?
This is a question for the chief. So chief, if the city is going in the direction that Counselor Shade has proposed, then you would be able to stay in touch with the insurance options available through the Fraternal Order of Police so that we may be able to ensure our indemnification offer here?
I believe so. I believe there are possibilities forming in that industry right now, and there may be some already formed, where a city can buy a policy to cover that portion if an officer should be found liable. And the question comes as to indemnification, the city may have a prepaid policy to cover that portion.
Would the city be paying for the officer to actually be a member of this fraternal order and it would cover them? Or would the city be buying a policy for the city?
If the city, if the city did it, it would be outside the FOP. If, if you are a member of the FOP, that will come as part of your dues that you're paying to that organization, which, which, which is a tag on policy, you have to pay more, but that option's going to be available. It's not yet, but they are working on making it available. If the city runs the policy, then the city pays for the policy that's in place to cover that portion, as I understand it, should that day come.
So we could compare that to SIRSAA, if they, SIRSAA, if they end up offering it as well, and then just figure out the best way to go.
And I don't know the, what the dollar amount on those policies are. I know what the, the state FOP president told me when I first started calling and asking, hey, is somebody going to put a policy together? Was they were thinking $7 a month on top of, on top of your dues. Yeah, not, not too bad.
No, thank you.
John, I guess you've got another comment here?
Yes. Can we, can we not direct the city administrator to put this policy in place?
But that, that was, I think, the, that's what we're trying to get. I'd like to see basically a show of hands of, of council members who think this is a good idea then. So without further ado, if, if you, if you're in favor, kind of if you raise your hand and, you know, if we're doing, generally, if you're in kind of an agreement with Counselor Shade's proposal here that we indemnify the police, that we cover their back, just let's have a show of hands. Okay. Think, okay, it looks like everybody but Mayor Pro Tem. Okay. All right, so I guess sure, please, please, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, first of all, I'm in complete support of a policy. I also am very attracted to this proposal because I do have great faith in our officers, and I would like to demonstrate, I, I think it's important to demonstrate that. However, I also think that the community have very, had very strong feelings about this bill. And I would like, I, I would love to hear if they have any reaction to this discussion that we're having tonight before we make a decision now. Granted, we can put this in place right now to protect our police officers in the interim as we look more fully into it. But I'm, I'm just, I just think it's premature to make a final policy decision, which we wouldn't, because it'd have to, I would assume it would have to come back to council anyway in a regular session. So that's, that's my reservations at this point. It's not that I am against the suggestion, I'm just nervous about it until I get a bit more information. Thanks.
I, I think those are good points, yeah. And I, I guess my thought would be that, that the direction we're, you know, going to, we're trying to give staff here is that the city administrator could go out and, and perhaps in conjunction with the police chief and, and look at costs and availability of policies and so forth and, and see what the actual costs and restrictions might be relative to, to getting the kind of indemnification that, that Mr. Shade had proposed. So that seems to be a direction to me. John, I see you got your hands raised?
Yes. I, I think my policy is not waiting for, for more research. My proposal is, is that we give direction that the city administrator, okay, put the indemnification in place immediately. Okay, and that if necessary, we pay for it out of the contingency. To me, I think this is any matter of how we would cover some kind of cost, okay? Whether it's in, whether we buy an insurance policy or whether we self-insure through the contingency, I think is always left up to our staff to kind of give us that kind of proposal. My proposal is that we direct the administrator to put that policy in effect ASAP and how that's done under the covers as far as whether we make a call to SIRSAA, whether we take out an insurance policy, whether we do it through contingency, whether we rob a bank, whatever it is, that we just do it.
Mayor Pro Tem, do you have a response?
No, I, I think I understood that. I'm just not ready to do that, that's all. So, thank you.
It seems to me like maybe there's some related kind of follow-on questions here, like, do we want a written policy? We haven't really addressed that. My, my personal preference is I like to have things in, in writing. I don't like to have them written so tightly that, that you don't have reasonable, you know, room to maneuver according to, to circumstances. But I think it does make things, things clearer. We have, relative to putting something in writing, and we wouldn't do this tonight, it would take some, some, some time. What, what are counsel's feelings on it? Denise, I see you seem to have a pretty strong feeling on that.
I just, what I'm hearing, and I want to make sure, is that you guys, you're asking me to go ahead and put this policy in place, which will be a written statement. I'll put that in place as quickly as possible. I can bring it back to council to look at it, and I will follow up with SIRSAA and follow, and then come back with you, to you with the, the answers that they have. So that's the direction I'm hearing. If that's incorrect, please let me know.
That seems to me to be a fair summation of it. Is there anyone in council who feels that that's not a, a fair statement, an accurate assessment of the, Mr. Shade?
Yes, I just want to make sure that, what I want to know is functionally, Denise, is if there was a, if this scenario came up tomorrow, would the policy that you're depicting, would it essentially indemnify this employee to what the attorney has said is $25,000? If it happened tomorrow?
So I would check with Catherine and Jeff and make sure that we put it in place. I would check in Greenwood Village, right? That's what you said, Catherine, they have that policy, so we would reach out to them to get that and see.
I don't want to, no, I don't want to spend a whole bunch of extra time on this. To me, this is $25,000, and I just want to know whether essentially at one minute past midnight tonight, whether our employees would feel like they're indemnified. That's all I want to know. Can you make that administrative determination?
Yes, I believe I can, with your guys' direction which you gave tonight.
And that would be my proposal.
Okay.
To clarify, thanks.
Looks like counsel is pretty much on board with that. Okay, Counselor Wolf?
So it sounds like there's two different proposals on the table. John Shade is suggesting that Denise issue a memo tomorrow morning. It can only be, it doesn't have to be more than one sentence. It can say effective immediately. If you get sued and you're found to have violated anyone's constitutional rights as a result of your failure to exercise good faith belief that you are doing the right thing, no worries, we'll pay for it. $25,000 in full, we'll pay for your indemnification liability under this new act, period. No need for her to say PS, it depends what SIRSAA says. PS, it depends what the Fraternal Order of Police policy. PS, let's come back in a week and talk about it some more. Shade is saying, let's do it now. John Graham is saying, oh, can we have Denise make some phone calls and we can discuss it next week? Those are the two different things I'm hearing. So if you're going to have us vote, tell us which one, which one we're voting on.
Can we vote on my proposal first, please, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, I, I didn't see it as two different proposals. Okay, so, so I, I guess really, John wants an immediate, and, and I don't, you know, I just always think that you have to get a price, sign things and, and get approvals and whatnot, but if, I mean,
there's probably no insurance and no price yet, John. Catherine explained that this is so new that to her knowledge, no one has yet offered insurance coverage for this, which is the same thing that Chief Churchill said, that this is so new that so far the Fraternal Order of Police are just sort of bantering around, but it's not yet official. So there's nothing to purchase yet. We're just saying, God forbid we get sued before we can purchase anything, we'll just have to pay for it out of cash. I think that's what I'm hearing.
That's what I'm saying.
This is, this is also a reminder for everyone, this is a work session, so we can give direction. But to make this formal, I do believe we'd have to bring it to the next regular meeting, correct? Or am I wrong about that procedurally?
So it depends on what you're doing right now. You're just directing Denise to issue the policy. So if you guys want to make a statement and issue a policy yourselves, correct, it has to come back to you.
We, we were just trusting Denise to issue it because it's probably just going to be one or two sentences. It's not going to be a complicated thing. It says, we'll pay for you guys. Don't worry, we love you. That's it.
Okay, but, but certainly this being a work session, this doesn't have the formality of a regular session where we'd actually have a binding vote and so forth. Okay, so I guess we're back to the question of John Shade's proposal, and it manifests itself in one or two sentences from Denise in the morning to the city staff. So if, if you're still on board with that, show your hands. Okay, all right, good. That's six, six in favor, and Mayor Pro Tem, you're, you're still withholding. So I guess that's the expected. Okay, well, it seems like we've, we've beat this horse up pretty hard. We provided some direction. I guess I'd ask the attorney sellers, what do you think we still need to do tonight?
Nothing on this topic.
Nothing on this topic. Okay, good, thank you. Mr. Shade, I saw your, your hand up.
And, and when we finish this, can we have a five-minute break, please?
I think so. In that case, is there any objection to saying that this is finished for tonight? Hearing no objection, well, let's take a 10-minute break. I've got 7:05, let's be back at 7:15. Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. So the next discussion item is the 2021 budget. We obviously, we had a budget retreat. I think there's follow-on questions that we wanted to, to ask and maybe have some questions answered and give ourselves an opportunity for discussion. I guess real quickly, I'd kind of like to, to go around the, the room and get a sense from counselors what you, what areas you would like to talk about, so maybe we could do this in some sort of organized fashion. I would also like to, we have department heads available. I'd like to get questions asked of those people who have been up late, you know, who've been working hard, like Denise said, and we could get those questions answered and let them get home and get to bed or get to bed. So.
Mayor, can we bring Becca over? She is the expert on this budget and knows that it's finding out. Pretty much answer any question that is given to her.
Okay, so that said, counsel, just real quick, do we have any particular areas that we want, that you really want to emphasize? So I think it'd be useful if we could sort of, you know, group our questions according to the various discipline or parts of the city budget. Mr. Bremner, do you have particular interests?
No, my questions have already been answered.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Chandler?
I just had a question mainly about parking. It was my understanding, and I'll, and I'll ask this to Roy. Roy, did I hear you say in the budget workshop that you were planning on a parking enterprise system? Could you elaborate on that? I, I need to know more of what you were thinking.
We're in the initial stages of looking at a possible parking enterprise. We haven't gone further with that, but we're, we're looking at that as a possibility.
And can you explain to me what exactly that means for the city?
It's no, it would be no different than the water enterprise.
Can I, can I chime in?
Denise, yeah, go please.
Is that we're going to be looking into this, might be bringing it back to council with the pros and cons and how we would do it if such. It would be like an enterprise, the water enterprise, which states that it's, all the money stays there, the city gets a pelt, a payment in lieu of taxes, and there's an agreement that goes with that. So it is, and then you can increase fees, do things like that without having to go to the bulk, the voters. So we're looking into it. Cities, and we're not a big city, but many cities do put their parking into our parking enterprise, which gives some flexibility. And we'll be bringing that, I'm thinking, we said March or April timeframe back to council.
Question, if that was on the agenda for '21. Thanks. You've answered my question.
It will be a 2021 initiative.
Okay, thank you.
What, what things did you want to ask about?
No, at this point, I felt good after the retreat. So I, I might address stuff that's brought up, if it's, if we get into a discussion on anything, but I have no specific questions right now. Thank you.
Yeah, just kind of trying to, to, to figure out where we want to take our discussion tonight. Councilman Shade?
You know, I'm, I'm okay with just going with the flow on this.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. Counselor Wilbrook?
I, I agree. I'm also okay with going with the flow on this. I think the questions I had previously have been answered. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Wolf? You're muted, Julie. There you are.
Okay. Well, my questions are kind of random. I mean, one of the things on the topic of parking that I wondered about.
Okay, Julie, in, in that case, if I might, I would suggest since Lynn Johnson's been up, I think, late. So if we have any questions for parks and rec or things that fall. So if we have any questions for Parks and Rec or things that fall. Lynn's question, if we could ask those and then we'd let her, give her a chance to get to bed after a long, long day.
No questions for Lynn.
Oh, no, for Lynn, okay. So, okay, does anyone have questions for Lynn? Her W Parks, I believe Denise, I believe she handles, you know, Parks and Rec. So anything, okay, any, any park and rec questions? Okay, we don't have any, so in that case, I think Lynn, thank you very much. If you'd like to, to get some sleep, we appreciate your, your being here. And now. Good night.
Yeah, she's put in a lot of hours, so thanks.
So Denise, among the attendees, do you see any other people that we should try and, you know. Make the evening short for, if possible, people we should talk to.
We're okay with everybody else, so I think we're fine.
Okay, great, so. All right, I guess we can kind of go in random order then, so Julie, would you like to start off?
Parking topic, I read something from Roy about April 1st is when supposedly we're going to start charging. For parking at Hiawatha and that supposedly it's going to be a dollar an hour. Why can't we get that done earlier? Can we get that done earlier? Why are we waiting? That was one of my questions. And then one of my other questions is, I don't. I don't feel comfortable about the shuttle going up and down Roxton after it gets dark because. I really think that people should be done hiking the incline by the time it gets dark. So I wonder about those hours being adjusted according to daylight savings time and, and what the hours are. For when it's dark. I also question whether the city should be paying for Shuttle 33 at all. I, I think the cog should pay for that, or we should just not have it if the cog doesn't care about it that much, but. Or if Colorado Springs wants to kick in to help the incliners get up the hill so they don't have to walk up the hill before they, before they hike the incline. But I have concerns about paying for that. So I wondered if anyone would have any discussion on that topic. About Shuttle 33.
So let me first, Roy, just, we can't, I don't know what happened, but I can answer a couple of those questions. Julie, until Roy gets back on and Kevin might also be able to answer them. If Kevin, if you want to come over, I'll go ahead and let you answer them if you would like, or if you want me to take them.
See, Kevin has his hand raised. I think he wants to respond.
Let's have Kevin come over since he's.
And I've got, and Roy just popped on, so I've got him coming over as well.
So first off, Kevin, if you could talk about the dollar an hour question? And why that's April and when we'll be bringing that to council?
You're muted, Kevin.
Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor. That was a compromise between the Transportation Parking Board and city staff. City staff wanted to go March to try to catch the spring break rush that would start coming in in March. Transportation Parking Board wanted to start in May, so we compromised with April 1st. Personally, from a staff perspective, I don't have a problem with beginning charging in Hiawatha as soon as possible. And as far as the shuttle, I have nothing on the shuttle.
Becca, I believe we're bringing back the, the fees to council in November. Is that correct? Becca, is that, and at that point, it will talk about the parking? And then council could give direction, a different direction, but it really was based on the Transportation Parking Board. Recommendation and advisory that council can then give a different direction. Roy, do you want to add anything to that? I see that you're back on. Right?
No, that's, that's absolutely correct. We will be bringing back the fee schedule to council in November. And the parking fees will be addressed at that time.
So then Counselor Wolf, you could change those as, as you would, as council feels appropriate. And then Shuttle 33, we cannot change those hours at this time, as you remember. When City of Colorado Springs came, you have to go through the evaluation and I will say, this morning I saw a resident. Go up there and use it, so it's not just incline, but if next year you want to, those hours changed. We can definitely go through that process and make those hours changed, especially during this next, you know, starting in, what, November? Starts getting dark earlier, et cetera, instead of going to eight o'clock at night, but that does need to go through the formal process. And then whether we pay for it or not, that is really for a council discussion of whether you want that to be on the. Whether you want that to be part of the budget. It is part of the bar trail that I've mentioned before and it is covered by the bar trail, but you can definitely. That's up to you. Roy, anything you want to add regarding the shuttle? It's the shuttle number 33.
I'm sorry, I was gone since the, I don't know what we're talking about. Sorry, I lost everything.
Let me just go back for a moment. They talked about a dollar and we, the fees for Hiawatha and to move that up and we talked about it was the Transportation Board. And that was their recommendation, but we're bringing it in November and council can change that.
To move, to move up the date, to start the fees or the price?
The date to start.
To start charging in Hiawatha, I explained that that was a staff recommendation of March. Transportation Parking Board recommendation of May and we compromised and settled on April 1.
Yeah, I think the, the reason behind that from the parking board perspective was. Covid and trying to encourage shoppers to continue coming into town. So it was a covid decision really and starting a little bit later in the, in the year. Staff was okay with the earlier start. But with, with the covid, not knowing how covid's going to be, you know. Argument that keeping it free may bring more people into town for shopping.
And then Shuttle 33. Counsel Wolf, do you want to re-address your question so that Roy's aware of what you're asking and he can address that accordingly? Do you want to re-ask it?
I understand, and maybe this is wrong. I thought. We were informed that effective January 1, we're going to be under a whole new contract with Mountain Metro. And then if we want to make any changes for the contract with Mountain Metro in terms of hours. That'll go to a public process. I'm proposing that that happen. And that it not be running in the dark. I'm also proposing that we remove it from the budget because I don't think we should pay for it. And, and so I'm also proposing that we have a discussion about when we should start charging for Hiawatha. I don't agree that it's in the city's best interest to wait until April. And it sounds like the city's perfectly capable of implementing that immediately. I also wondered if the city could do a reservation system for Hiawatha. I think that would make sense, but I guess that maybe is beyond the scope of the budget discussion unless that's something that we would need to budget for. If that's a separate thing that hasn't, that we don't own any capability to do that already, which I thought we did because of the pool and the whole presentation Roy made about. Making a parking reservation system as part of the pool. I don't know if that's still an option, but I'd really like. To know if that's something we should budget for because I think a reservation system where you have to pay in advance for your parking spot. Will have a huge positive impact on reducing traffic and congestion. So, do you know, Roy? Is that something that you already can do or do we need to budget for it or what?
Actually, we can do it within our system, Park Mobile. We can do a reservation system. So if there's that interest, we definitely can, could look at that further and, and the, the cost is. Part of the program, so. We could, we could do that fairly easy. It wouldn't require any additional startups that we couldn't deal with. Is that right, Kevin?
Counselor Wolf, to Roy's point, yes, Park Mobile does have the capabilities to do so. And if there would be an extra fee, Park Mobile could set it up to pass that on to the user, not the city.
Good to know.
Right, is that part of your T M M P that you're looking at and implementing over time?
As we, we were looking at possibly reservations at Bar. The currently, it was working with the incline system that we have with reservations and parking space. It's been working fairly well, but it. Definitely is something to consider, to look at further if, if having reservations would be. Something really positive there in Hiawatha. I do think some people would really like that. So then they can set their, their parking spot and not worry about it, so it can be a plus. We would have to staff it because one of the errors at Bar was. When we had a reservation system a few years ago, it wasn't staffed or monitored very well, so then people took other, other. Reservations away. They just drove up, took up the parking spot. And that could lead to problems, so we would have to make sure they're actually reserved, otherwise it wouldn't work and we'd have a lot of disgruntled customers, so. So as long as we set it right and, and the price and the cost covers that, so that's stuff we can definitely look into and see what we can do with that. And also the pricing, again, I'm, I'm okay with the earlier start. And, and we'd be happy to do it whichever way council wants us to proceed with the pricing of Hiawatha, when it started.
So two things, the November, we'll be, be bringing the fines back and that's when council can give direction to start it earlier. At that point in its November, I can't remember the date, but it's early in November. Regarding the Park Mobile, it is already in the budget and it's already covered, so it's really just an operations. Of looking at what it takes to put it in and how we would do that and when we would take that over. Is that correct?
Yes, and, and I'll answer then the, I think it was one more question, Miss Wolf, that. Shuttle 33, so any shuttle changes will need to submit our request by December? And then it goes to public hearing in April. So as long as we have our request and by December, we should be fine with.
In that case, it sounds like we might want to put this on the agenda for November.
Yes, we need to do it.
If other people have interest. Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Chandler?
Yes, since we're on the topic of the metro system. So it's my understanding if we put this on the agenda for December for a January change to the metro system. Is there any talk about any of these fees being charged for Hiawatha Gardens going to. Running the 36 shuttle year round, which right now is run from April to September for the tourists. But I know many residents count on that shuttle to get them into town and back. So is there any talk about having any of those funds go to the 36 shuttle running year round?
I would, I would assume that would be a council directive if you wanted us to look at doing that. We haven't investigated the, the need and I know that with the shuttles themselves, there's. There's kind of what they call a five-minute walking distance for the shuttle stop, so some of the things we might have to look at is. Is where there's current shuttle stops right now and, and does it make sense to have? If there's another bus on, on Benetoo Avenue, I guess 33, 36? The downtown one from, from Colorado Springs.
33?
33. So if, if there's, if the distance is like a five-minute walking distance, that's normally acceptable, but I, I don't know that. But we can, we can look into that and I know there's some people interested in that area to have year-round shuttle service and. And from a environmental impact, I think it's important to do shuttles and, and the best we can, as long as it makes sense. With the neighborhoods and, and if we're hitting all the neighborhoods as well, so we have to think about different parts of town. So if we do one there, do we, do we have any at Crystal Hills Road or in other areas? So we have to kind of do a little check on that, on what's fairness, inclusion, I guess, in all the neighborhoods. Can they all achieve that five-minute walk?
Right, so I hear. Okay, thank you. It sounds like there's a need and an inclusion factor here, but it's still, it, it is on the table. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
We don't have it in the budget right now. It is not part of the budget, so if we go back and we put that in the budget, those funds that we're planning to bring in for Hiawatha. Goes to others, so I have to look and see what that will cost the city and then we'll have to cut other areas. So if the direction from council is they ask you want that, now I'll have to see what the cost is. Roy, do you remember the cost? It's.
I, I.
I remember. Thousand dollars.
Yeah, you, I think you're close. I think it was, I'd have to double check. He did have an estimate and I thought. What did you say? You broke up. It was 60,000, you said?
65,000 is what I recall.
I, I think you're close. It's somewhere in there. I think it was under 100,000.
We'd have to go back and look and see what that would cost and then what the ridership is, do that analysis, bring it back. And then if that's where you want it to go, then we would go back as staff and see where we cut the budget. Or do you want to go into reserves to do it? And that would be up to you.
Okay, thank you.
Question, Denise, on that, that shuttle that serves the Becker's Lane neighborhood, it was, is that funded during the summer season by U R A money?
Yeah, that's 100% funded by U R A and that is another thing you could ask U R A. Is if they would be willing to fund that year round, but that does not come out of the city budget.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Wolf, did, did you get the answers you were looking for?
Well, no.
I think there's.
Really, I, it's all very vague. Judith said so, we can have a meeting in December about the changing the Mountain Metro route and that'll work okay. And Roy said, yeah, but then when Roy was talking, he said, no, you have to make your decision by December. Maybe he meant the end of December and I was thinking the beginning of December, but anyway, that didn't. Yeah, and I still have no idea if anybody is supportive about. Having the cog and/or Colorado Springs help pay for the shuttle that goes up Roxton. So I don't really have any answers, to be honest, no.
I would say to be safe, we should have a decision by mid-December with the holidays.
Then we really do need to get that on the budget beforehand. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Wilbrook?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I know back before I was on council, so this would have been the two, 2017 council or before. There was definitely a lot of discussion about the Roxton shuttle and how a number of neighbors in that neighborhood. You know, would take the, the, I think it's the three that goes all the way to Colorado Springs. And then use the Roxton shuttle, incline shuttle to connect to their neighborhoods and it does get dark. And when, next week it's going to be dark at 5:30. So I don't want to undo something that we worked hard on many years ago before our times on council. And I think that would just involve some citizen participation. Maybe the Bulletin could report on this. Or we could do some outreach through social media, but I, I think the same things that Judith is talking about with the 36 shuttle. Are things that are applicable and we've gone through several changes over the years to make it possible to take that bus from Colorado Springs. And then catch the bus up Roxton. So I don't want to lose anything just because years have passed and council has changed over on that. And then my second question would be for Roy and Kevin. I know that Scott Lee from Colorado Springs, who is their director of parking, has, you know, been available to kind of help you guys when you need it. And I'm wondering, I understand that, that it's my understanding that the Transportation Parking Board doesn't want to start it until April. Staff had agreed on March. Councilwoman Wolf is talking about possibly having council look at starting it even sooner, charging in Hiawatha. But I'm wondering if Scott Lee, who, who is really very knowledgeable and, you know, lives in Breeze Parking all day long, as far as I could tell. If he has an opinion on this, because I'd like to know that too, because he has been made available to help us.
I have not received an opinion from Scott Lee. I'm not sure if Roy has. And it was explained to the Transportation Parking Board in their July meeting. When we were going over all of the fines and fees, that council did have the discretion to change that date sooner.
I will say, I, I talked with Scott Lee about the pricing and everything that we're doing to get his opinion. From a standpoint of when we charge, he didn't think it mattered too much, you know, the pricing's the bigger deal. And, and the fact that, you know, you help control congestion with pricing, there's a lot of reasons you charge and it's not about making money. It's about you controlling congestion because that's the only method really you have. To, to make people think about driving into town versus taking the shuttle or biking or other modes of transportation. So he had, he, he didn't feel there was a problem earlier or later on charging.
Thank you for those comments. And I just want to point out something that is different now than it was months ago and has been different for this year. Is that we now have a a public information officer. And we've really made our social media, I think, as a city more robust on every level. And I think one of the concerns that the Transportation Parking Board has had in the past has always been that we make these changes and there hasn't been a really robust way of getting that information out to the public. So I think it's important to recognize no matter what we decide to do, when we do it and what the price is, that you know, getting that information out a lot to through the chamber, but also through our own sites to customers. Hey, if you're going to come over this Saturday, book a parking reservation instead of circling. Because everybody else is going to come over this Saturday too, because it's going to be sixty degrees in November. And I think that's the kind of thing we would really need to engage on, especially as we make a change from free parking to paid parking. And really treat it as a positive in social media. This is good for the environment. This is good for you because you'll come over and you won't get frustrated and leave, which people do all the time. I mean, I can tell you that from living downtown and also having a business, people just give up. And I think so, I think we have the tools that we haven't had in the past to really make whatever decision we make well-known and a positive message. And I just want to say that because it's really different from any time I've lived in Manitou. The whole time I've been here. Thank you.
Mr. Shada?
Yes, sir. My suggestion is, is that, and I think we talked about this with Mountain Metro, which is that if that shuttle goes away, that at least in the winter that Mountain Metro go all the way to the Ruxton Turning Circle. To me, in the middle of the winter, to be dumped off essentially on the east end of Memorial Park and have to wait fifteen minutes for another shuttle is, that's a non-starter. I mean, that's almost like almost half your trip from Colorado Springs waiting for another shuttle. In my opinion, I think we could do a a great service. We don't have a lot of congestion in the winter for that bus to go downtown. Okay? And I think we got a heads up from Mountain Metro, but that wasn't going to really just throw that number three schedule off. If essentially it made that route.
Thank you. It's a good observation. Okay. Mayor Procham?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is I would like to respect the Transportation and Parking Board's opinion and recommendation at this point. Other than that, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other on when parking fee would be implemented. Secondly, I I think that perhaps it is time to have the community meetings in concert with Mountain Metro to better inform our decision. I'm not at all prepared to recommend changes at this point until we hear from our own community and find out what their needs are. And I recognize that by doing, by setting that in motion, it puts more work on the staff. So I would like to take that into consideration. If we do, if we decide to do it or not. Lastly, I would prefer not to make any huge changes at this point in time because Roy is supposed to come back to us with a comprehensive plan of of for mobility within the city. And I would like to get rather than us telling him bits and pieces of what we want, I would like to hear his plan first and then us address it i- in total. So those are, those are my thoughts on some of these recommendations. I'm a little bit more conservative, I guess, in the direction I'd like to take.
Counselor Wolf?
I have a question for Nancy. So Nancy, with what you just suggested, since we're about to get committed to a five-year contract with Mountain Metro by early January, do you foresee doing all of this community outreach and stuff in time for any changes to happen? Or do you want us to just discuss this in five and a half more years when, when it's time? Or five years, four and a half more years when it's time to talk about the new contract again?
Yeah.
That's the only reason I have concerns about how many meetings we want to have and how much community input. And as long as, it sounds like we need to have some direction by, Roy said, by mid-December. So.
Yeah, my understanding is that Mountain Metro has a predetermined mechanism by which to do the community input. I know I did participate in the last, when they did it several years ago. And there was a, you know, I I don't take, other than up Ruxton, I don't take the shuttle at all. But I know a lot of, well, I don't know a lot anymore, but people, what I learned at that meeting is that people are highly dependent upon it. So I want to move very cautiously before any decisions are made to take something away from our community in that regard. And my understanding too was even if we go into a contract with Mountain Metro, we can still make amendments and prob, maybe I misunderstood that, but I I got the sense that we could still cancel things if we wanted to. So yeah, I I don't. I I would just prefer to move more slowly on this. And I don't think it's a hu, I don't believe it's a big issue to enter into contract, but I am open to people who know more about it than I do.
So two things, let me just, I have their presentation here in for a spring. They say that their public process occurs in January. It's so their public process would be all of January and then the implementation in late April. If we do a spring timeline, if we do the fall, the public process is in May with a late September. And also the cost around thirty-six, just from January twenty-ninth through September twenty-six is sixty-five thousand. So to make it year-round, we'd have to go back and see what that cost is. So that is per their presentation that they gave. So I think it's, we just have to go back to them in December and say what we'd like for them to look at, and then they would do the public process in January.
Denise, does that mean then that we don't have to sign a new contract?
That would be my
You sign a new contract before you do the public process?
That's a great point. I think it would be that we would probably do our contract for keeping if we wanted to keep thirty-three going during this time or not. And then wait until that time and after the public process, then we would do the the contract. But we would probably do a month or something like that.
Oh, so Nancy is correct that the contract can be, we can have a six-month contract or a nine-month, it doesn't have to be a five-year contract.
Julie, I don't know, or Counselor Wolf, I honestly don't know that. I will ask that clarification. I'm going to assume that because you don't want to do a five-year contract if you haven't done the public process yet. I would need, we will have to reach out to him and get that, but I would, we would just need to get that clarification.
I might add, and and I'm not sure of this, but basic, based on some things I've seen in P P A C G meetings, we do the five-year contract, but we still have, I think, within that contract, the ability to make changes periodically to the to the route. Again, I'm I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but I think that's the case. Counselor Wolf?
Are we on a new subject?
Well, I was going to see if we've, if we have anything more with parking or shuttles. Traffic. Might also mention, I believe Roy is planning on giving us at a work session, an overview of the mobility plan as it's, as it stands now. I think he also has the the parking. He's got several projects that he's working on for presentation later on as he has worked at work sessions. So I think some of that, some of these questions will be fleshed out more as we, as we get have the opportunity to hear more about what Roy's been up to. So.
This, this is somewhat related, John. May I ask a related parking question then before we? The the budget has this thing, I didn't know what it was, a hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars is budgeted for mobility project implementation. Is that something that staff will decide what to spend that money on or is that up to us?
That is in the T M M P was designated as T M M P implementation. So it would be staff looking at ways to do it, which part of that was already the parking logics, crosswalk signs, things like that. So it would be all part of the
Wayfinding signs.
Right. So yeah, so that would be
So have we already purchased the kind of wayfinding signs that will notify people when they first enter town about which lots still have open spaces? Or is that something that has to come out of the two thousand twenty-one budget as part of this hundred and seventy-two grand?
The the wayfinding will be part, some of it's part of the parking logics. And it'll be multiple modes of doing that. So it'll be, because they they recommend you have different types. So we'll have be using Park Mobile, we'll be using the parking logics. So it'll be a lot of interactive online maps that show where the parking spaces are and what's available. So there might be a little bit of cost, but it's not going to be a big part of that at this point.
Oh, we're not going to have, we're not going to have signs that tell people which parking lot has spaces you have to go online?
Well, online if you're out of town, but when you come into town, you'll have signs that will, for example, at Hiawatha will be a sign that says there's a number of open spots and then how many spots are open on the next lot. So people making, can make decisions to hit Hiawatha, or if that's full, they can go to Wichita, which will show the number of spots available at Wichita. When they get to Wichita lot, there'll be a indication on how many are available there as well as the next lot. So hopefully they take the lots as they go up into town. Anything before that, since they're already drove out to Manitou area, they're probably going to come into town regardless to look around and still drive and congest. So so the best thing is at the lots themselves and then to indicate the next lot. And then the rest will be put online to help people decide at home where to go. And that's where where your idea of the reservations could be helpful because then they can also do that ahead of time. So.
Kevin, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, Counselor Wolf, and to Roy's point, there will be stationary signs at the pool and down along Manitou Avenue approaching Hiawatha that do not indicate the amount of parking, but keep traffic flowing in the direction towards parking.
Does that mean?
So they're not going to be digitalized or anything like that. We're just gonna have the universal parking sign with visitor information, three quarters of a mile. And we're just going to continue to direct traffic towards these electronic signs.
Okay, so can I just make sure I get it? So if I, if I'm coming into town from Colorado Springs, the first thing I find out is that there's a parking lot at Hiawatha because there's a sign at the pool telling me that. Then I drive to Hiawatha and the sign says lot is full. Continue forward another eighth of a mile to Wichita, which will be on your right or something like that, like there's. Because right now, all I've noticed is signs at the parking lot that say, oh, it's full. And I thought, well, I just drove all the way here to find out it's full. I thought we were trying to avoid that, you know? You can see if it's full or not by just opening your eyes and looking around for two seconds. Yeah, so why do we spend all this money just to, we don't have to look around for two seconds like that?
So so you know, we we don't have all the equipment in yet. That's the, that's the why. We, so we temporarily put up the the half the signage, but it's not what, everything's not in yet. And COVID's delayed that. So we're hoping to get that, what, in about a, hopefully thirty to ninety-day, or not even ninety-day, probably thirty to sixty-day window. And that will be the the larger signs there at the entrance where we'll give the indication you're talking about. It'll have an arrow. It'll have the occupancy numbers. So currently, we just put up what we had to test the system. So you're a hundred percent right. It wouldn't be enough right now to give anybody much of anything except us. We're getting, we're trying to pick up data and and start to tweak the system before the other parts come in. Kevin, did you have some?
Fortunately, this part had to be installed first to communicate with these auxiliary signs.
So so it's only half a system. So it's it's not very helpful to drivers. It is helping us though. We're trying to tweak it and get some data ahead of time. But hopefully in about a month or two, we'll have the rest of it put up and then, and then you can let us know your thoughts at that time. Thank you.
Procham, you had your hand up a little bit ago. Did you still have a comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Mayor Procham, yeah, did?
Maybe premature for, to do this, but I think we need a preponderance of council to to either say yea or nay to some of the things we've discussed, that we want to move forward or just let them go as they currently are. So in other words, does the majority of council want to do a community? You know, want to give Met, Mountain Metro direction to do a community process? Do we want to, well, I guess we'll wait until the fee schedule comes out in November to make the determination on the Hiawatha Garden charging. So just that sort of thing. I'd just like to, I think it would be helpful if we you know, council kind of said yea or nay, go forward or don't on some of these issues.
Okay, with that in mind, with with that in mind, perhaps we could just do a show of hands and see, you know, respond to a couple of those things, see if we can establish direction. So I guess the 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 first point that you raised there, Nancy, is do we want to ask Mountain Metro to to do the public process? I think they typically do it. Is, do I understand that correctly?
Well, staff is engaged in it as well. It's not just, it's a co-production.
Okay, all right. So so basically a public process that would presumably be done jointly by Manitou and and Mountain Metro. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a show of hands for, from council members who would support that idea to to initiate a a public process to to figure out ridership basically needs on on the, on the shuttle system.
And if it's done spring, in the spring or the fall session as well. I would assume spring. Yeah.
Would I, would I be correct in saying doing it sooner rather than later? I mean, like before December, we need to get, give them direction by, I think sometime in December. They'd be in Mountain Metro. Okay, so let, let, let me ask this, okay, council, we show hands for those of you who would support the idea of asking for a public process to be done by jointly with City Manitou Springs staff and Mountain Metro and to get this done say by the, by December, so that they can implement it for springtime or January timeframe. Who would support that?
Be more specific than that? I mean, do we have to be more specific? We're, we're asking them to have a meeting about ridership. That's pretty vague. I would, I would imagine we'd need to give them a lot more specificity or, I mean, that's, I, how do I vote on that? That's, I'm not sure.
Well, just a minute here. Okay, Denise, do you have a response to that?
Let us reach out to Mountain Metro and see exactly what they need from us so that we get clear direction from them. And then we will come back to you. I will say, from a administrative perspective, it's been five years since this has been changed. And I think it would be beneficial for our community to be able to give input if they would like some changes. But let me move, let us reach out to Mountain Metro. We'll talk to them, Roy and Kevin, and we'll come back to you with some information of what they need and when they need it by, and then that would allow us to have direction from there.
That, that, that sounds good. Okay, so if there's no objection, let's, let's go with Denise's proposal there. Are there any, any objections to what Denise proposed? No, okay. So Denise, thank you. That was a good idea.
I will say, if there are some changes in the budget next year, let's say that right now we decide to add more transit to certain things and it changes the budget thing, staff will go back and see where we cut that to to make those. Or are there other revenues? Maybe it's the cog or other ways to help pay or the U R A. So those are things that we'll have to look at as we move forward.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, Counselor Wolf?
This is a new subject, but
Well, okay, just, okay. But before we change subjects, does anyone have anything else they want to talk about relative to parking or congestion or shuttle service, any of that? Okay, seems like we've talked that out. Okay, let's go on to the next subject, Counselor Wolf.
I'd be interested in finding out the cost of hiring a full-time person who has strong legs and good hiking ability, who doesn't smoke, who's in shape and has good boots to be our full-time you know, camp. You know, camp finder and cleaner-upper for all our homeless encampments around. Um, I would like that person to be responsible for and have experience hopefully with. Being able to um, coordinate with the private landowners. Who own the land that the um, encampments are on. And I'd be interested in exercising our rights under our code to uh, tell the private owners. That, you know, either you clean up these camps or we're gonna clean them up and we're gonna have you pay us back, like we're doing with the piney house that burned down.
Yeah, Julie, Counselor Bremner has been doing some work in this area, uh, and I think he could speak to some of your questions. So um, I see that he had his hand raised.
He can tell me if we're gonna have a full-time person? That'd be great. Are we gonna have a full-time person, Steve?
Okay, let's, let's, let Steve have the floor and then he can respond to some of your comments, Julie. I don't know the answer, everything. Uh, Counselor Bremner, you've got the floor.
Okay, yes, I understand. You remember last session when I asked for the chief to come up with a plan? Well, he's gonna brief us on that plan, I believe, on the tenth, and Denise is nodding her head. So yes, we're working on that now and um, I would like to have a full-time person, but let's wait and see what the chief has. And go forward with that. Um, and as you might have followed a little bit, you know, we've actually got some community involvement. With getting out there, cleaning up some of these camps, like for instance, the site of the, the burn up there on the bar trail. We had a big effort last Saturday, called out about twenty bags of trash. There's still more trash to do. And there, they have another session planned for this Sunday. So uh, that's just one site. So. My hope is to have, just as you described, a full-time person, person who's very athletic. Uh, good boots, all that kind of stuff, curious, uh, wants to go search out these sites, follow through. Work with the property owners, all that, so that we can identify the sites. Find out where they all are, clean them up, and then monitor them so that they, people don't return. And, you know, I understand that people need a place to stay. Uh, and I'm, I camp a lot. But I'm a leave no trace, trace kind of guy. I don't leave my trash. And that's what I object to with all these illegal encampments all around our town, is they leave tons and tons and tons of trash. And they start fires. And that's a danger to our community, so we need to address that. So let's wait and see what the chief has uh, next week, I believe. Thank you.
Denise, I believe you, I saw your hand raised. I don't know if you still have comments relative to this?
I was gonna say, yeah, um, chief will be presenting a plan, and I think he will be giving several options, I, I believe, but I'm not sure. And he also has a plan of how to fund it. So he'll be bringing that to you for your um, recommendations of how to move forward. But it is something that we are looking at to put in place sooner rather than later, and he'll be presenting that in the next week.
Right, right, thank you. And just before we change topics, I was gonna say, uh, later on during council correspondence, I'd like to get council's opinion as to when we want to hear that. We, we may hear it on the tenth, we could potentially hear it sooner. Okay. Okay, so any, anything relative to homeless or campsites or anything like that, illegal campsites? Obviously, we'll be hearing more in the near future. Okay, what other budget questions do we have? Where we pretty well talked out. Counselor Wolf?
Hi, I um, the million dollars that's designated for the Ruxton Corridor. Um, I asked a question about that and I got a helpful response from Dole. And it says, um, basically that that money is going to be spent to design and implement, I'm quoting. Design and implement what the Ruxton functionality study recommended. Which will include utility, undergrounding, improved sidewalks, blah, 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 blah. Is, is that a done deal? Are we already committed to spending a million dollars to fix up Ruxton?
Dole, do you want to come on over? Let's bring him over so he can address that, but yes.
I have concerns about spending money to underground there. I wonder if that really is the best place for us to be focusing our undergrounding. So I, I'm not really in favor of designating a million dollars for staff to spend whatever they feel like it on Ra- on Ruxton. I, I'm not comfortable with that. So I wanted to see if we could have some more information and some discussion about that. Oh, there's Dole.
Dole, do you want to go ahead and do that?
Sure. Um, so that project is really just the design phase of the future of the corridor. Um, maybe if you had more specifics, Counselor Wolf, I could uh, answer them for you.
Oh, sure. I, so you're gonna spend a million dollars to do a design? I just wanted to know what that million dollars is going to be spent on, and the answer you gave me, at least the part that I, I didn't quote the whole thing.
Sure.
Was that it's for undergrounding and sidewalks, uh, utility undergrounding, improved sidewalks, curb and butter gutter. Roadways, storm drain, new sanitary and water lines. Um, I just. Personally, I'm not in favor of spending all that money on Ruxton, so I wanted to talk about that.
Sure. So that money, part of it has already been spent towards the survey. The topographical survey of the corridor and also doing right-of-way delineation. So that we can finally know where the corner parcels are and where the city's right-of-way is. So that when we do go do some construction, we will know whether or not we are actually in our right-of-way. Or if the city has to either avoid certain areas or um, do easements or even potentially acquisitions. So that number is just a budgeted amount. Uh, one of my tasks in the next thirty to forty-five days is to develop a RFP. That will go out to the design engineering community to help us do the design of the corridor. And other, everything you just mentioned would be included in that design scope. Um, you know, don't quote me on this, but that, that design effort should be. You know, fifteen percent of that money that's budgeted, I would say that that design scope might be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For an engineering company to come in and do all that design. You know, as we've experienced the last three or four days, you know, um, it would be a great improvement to that corridor. To have the water line and sanitary line completely upgraded through there. To also run fiber optic conduit, so we can have conduit all the way up to there. CSU would like to have conduit um, to their hydro plant. So that money is just a budgeted amount. Um, that does not mean that all that money will be spent on design. Now, to the utility undergrounding effort of that, part of um, what I have been discussing and thinking about. Is that, you know, with survey done, right-of-way delineation done, we could proceed into the design effort. Um, what the corridor is gonna look like, run some, some, run some roadway templates through there, so we can figure out what our right-of-way needs might be. Because, you know, the, I mean, based on my limited experience with Manitou, the right-of-way lines are not always well-defined. So we may have to go through and do some property acquisitions. We may have to go through and redo some title work. There could, there, there's some unknown costs with that right now that we just don't know, so that money could be spent for that. Um, and then as, as everybody knows, there's a significant amount of utilities that could benefit from being undergrounded. Some of that could be done. Um, earlier in partnership with CSU. CSU has a program where they will pay a percentage of undergrounding their primary power lines. If you get um, partnered with them early enough in the planning year, so they can budget accordingly. So some of that money could be used as a match towards CSU undergrounding their, their primary power lines. So in my opinion, I don't think a million dollars will be used for that, but I do think a million dollars can be used on Ruxton.
I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to point out that the, the city would not be paying itself. This, uh, what we have budgeted of a hundred, nine hundred and ten thousand. But this is mainly funded through a Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments uh, grant. And uh, which usually pays around eighty, eighty-two percent.
Eighty-two, yep.
Right, so the grant revenue that I, I still haven't coming in would be seven hundred and fifty-three thousand four eighty of the nine-ten. So the city would only actually be paying a hundred and fifty-six thousand five twenty. Uh, that's what I was told the grant was for, that it's for nine hundred and ten thousand.
Different from our own budget, so I must be confused. I thought that was our money. So this is, so really, we're only budgeted two hundred grand for this?
Right, see, we can't, we can't do a net. So we're gonna have a revenue line of seven hundred and fifty-three thousand four eighty. And then we have an expenditure line of the whole entire amount, which is what I've been told was nine hundred and ten thousand.
Oh, and that's the eighty-two percent?
Right, that eighty-two percent of the seven fifty-three four eighty. There's a revenue line for that.
Thanks, thank you.
And Dole, do you want to talk a little bit about how long it takes to get a grant like that? Isn't it a five? To put it in like five years, so it's.
Yes, it's.
You don't want to give this money back. We do need to use it on Ruxton. We did do the Ruxton study. You guys adopted the Ruxton study. I think it was one point seven five or three point seven five. I can't remember of how to make Ruxton work. But this is a five or six-year process that it was in, that we submitted the grant. It takes that long to get on. Dole, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, uh, and not only that, uh, the PPRTA process is lengthy, but I, I mean, you know, Becca brought up a good point. I mean, you know, the city of Manitou is gonna be spending eighteen percent of the total cost. And is getting a significant bang for their buck thanks to the PPRTA one percent sales tax, you know? Um, but I, but I, I think that this is the next big frontier for the community. And how that corridor is managed and laid out. And if, if nothing else, you know, if nothing else, just getting those utilities undergrounded. Getting some of the critical infrastructure upgraded and we'll just open that corridor up. I mean, the sidewalks are all jammed up with utility poles, you know, but then we don't even know where the right-of-way lines are. So there, there's a lot of investment that has to happen behind the scenes and ahead of time to really allow the city to benefit from. You know, the great corridor that it is, and then to make some improvements, whatever those improvements may be.
Julie, does that help? Okay, good, yeah. And I, there's a, for my own two cents, I remember talking to several department heads. Who've had profound concerns about the condition of the sewer lines under Ruxton and, and the water lines. And that seems to me to be a, a real time bomb. It's obviously, it's an important street, heavily trafficked. We, we, we're gonna need to deal with that. The sooner we can get some of those concerns uh, fixed, the better. I sometimes worry about, you know, ADA compliance things or EPA problems that might result from some of the problems we have there. I think the responsible thing is to, to really get a handle on Ruxton and, and, and get it fixed. It's, it, it's not something that's gonna happen in one year, one year's budget. As Dole said, it's, it's six or seven years. But, but let's get going. Let's try and get this thing fixed. Mr. Shady, you have a comment?
Yes, as somebody who goes up and down Ruxton probably five days a week. I think we need to figure out, I, I'm, I, I am in, I'm support of this initiative. But I guess what I'd like to do is ask if there's anything we can do. Um, in, in the next year to get some kind of a grade separated sidewalk. From um, Ruxton and Pilot Knob around that corner, okay? To Winter Street. We're gonna kill somebody, all right? All we have right now is a white stripe on the road. It's gone. It doesn't make any difference whether it's there anyway. Okay, somebody goes around that corner. There's lots of pedestrian traffic there, okay? We're supposed to be, you know, setting ourselves up as this walkable community. And it seems like to me that is something that if we can get some early ideas as to where the right-of-way is in that area. And get some public improvements in that area, I think we could save somebody's life.
So if I could, if I could weigh in real quick, I know that we had a Ruxton functionality study. And I know when uh, you hear me say things like begin design on that. Um, I think there are a lot of unanswered questions that, that need to be discussed thoroughly and with detail. And I think Mr. Shady, that, that's a similar comment where we, you know, this, this corridor needs to be looked at block by block.
And I respect your opinion on that, but we are gonna kill somebody, okay? I don't want to wait for three years or whatever for a whole bunch of studies and stuff like that. That corridor is heavily trafficked with pedestrians right now. Next summer, with the cog turning on, with increasing bus traffic and vehicular traffic. It is scary right now, okay? With the little amount of traffic we have up there, okay? But this is something that I would really ask that we somehow or another figure out a priority and have a goal. That we have a grade separated sidewalk in that area by June one. That's the goal I would like to see. And I'd like to see how we can figure out how we understand the property ownership, what we own. What is owned there by that property owner around that corner, okay? And get that addressed before June one.
I'll support that.
I think, I think it's just a critical public safety issue. That, that it's not like we're not gonna have pedestrian traffic there. It's not like in five years. And if in five years, there's some magical thing, that there's some pedestrian overpass that happens at Pilot Knob. So that you climb over that area and you go around, that's fine, but that's five years down the road. To me, this is something that I see this happen on a daily basis. People are, somebody's going to get killed there.
Okay. Okay, Ca- Councilman Shad, I think we, we understand your, your comments and, you know, appreciate that. You know, our, our central focus now, of course, is on the budget, so I guess your, your comments are well taken.
Why I'm trying to get it in the budget. I want to get it in the budget to get it, something in there.
Well, it's already in the budget. Isn't it already in the budget?
There's nothing in the budget to do any concrete work there.
No, 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 it's just this vague thing where staff will figure out how to spend the million dollars. But we don't have any guarantee about when or, so maybe, I don't know, maybe is that a budget issue? Or is that more of a directing staff to see if Public Works is able to make a priority of that area?
Uh, Dole's got his hand raised and then uh, Count, uh, Mayor Pretend Fortune, so we'll hear from Dole next.
So this project was set up, from what I can understand, and it was allocated and budgeted for everything we described for this design phase. And then there is additional PPRTA and PPACG funds coming in. Uh, years twenty-three and twenty-four, um, three and a half million dollars are budgeted. And that would be the, the way this was set up was that that would then be the construction phase for the corridor. So construction implementation can, and most importantly, construction funding is budgeted for then. And that's in their five-year tip that's available um, online.
Okay, great, thank you, Dole. Uh, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, thanks. Um, first of all, in our budget book, it has, in the very back, are all the capital improvement. Um, there's a page on each capital improvement um, project, which is really helpful in describe, giving a, an overview. A strategic overview of what the projects are, which I find very helpful to go back and periodically reference. Secondly, the Ruxton Avenue project is an incredibly complex undertaking. Of which I, I don't think directing that we put inside, the grade separated sidewalks, however you call them, at this point. Is um, the best way forward. I could see maybe putting a temporary, you know, those, those pole. You know, kind of poles that you stick into the asphalt or whatever. It's a little bit better than a um, uh, white line. Uh, but until we have surveys and so on, we don't know what we've got access to. So I don't want, I, I would be very uncomfortable with council getting too much into the weeds on directing. How the, the phasing of an engineering, a huge engineering project. So I'm very concerned about that. So I wouldn't support sidewalks by um, June first. I would support coming up with some safety mechanisms to put in. by, um, June first. I would support coming up with some safety mechanisms to put in there for the pedestrians. Thanks.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes, so part of the TMMP is.
He just froze.
You're frozen, Roy.
He just froze.
Probably Halloween here.
It could be worse.
Some problems earlier, I think, and trying to rejoin the meeting.
He may have to log off and come back on. Could we go on to another if there's something else and then we'll come back to this? Because I have a feeling he's gonna have to log off and come back on.
Actually, um, Dole, maybe you can respond. Dole, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, um, and to Nancy's point, um, you know, one of the things that can get the city into some, into some unnecessary complexity is if you, if you get too far ahead of yourself. And so one of the things I thought that we have done fairly well was by getting this survey and right of way delineation out. And, you know, we've had that under contract since August, I think. Um, we got a really competitive price. They're on their way. The surveyor is actually a local person who lives in Manitou. Um, and so we, we are trying to be as efficient as we can, you know, and, and there's also some, there's some unanswered questions from the Ruxton, Ruxton functionality study. That, that study is not to a level of detail that we can just put a set of plans on the street. There are a lot, there are a lot, and be, because there are a lot of questions still to be asked and then difficultly answered, you know, my thought was at least let's get the survey so we know what's out there and let's get the right of way process started. So then when the community and you all, and we all work together and come up with, you know, this is really what we think the corridor needs, I will be, we will be ready to go with the critical data needed to proceed down that route as necessary. So I, I, I wish we could just start and go and do, but, um, there's just a lot of behind the scenes that has to happen. And, you know, I'm happy to keep, to, to be communicating where we are on the budget wise for Ruxton. I feel very fortunate that we have that money budgeted. I think that that gives us an opportunity to really, you know, we can do some of those temporary traffic calming, pedestrian aligning. We can do some things to, to really make that corridor potentially safer. Now, this also goes to, to the point that we have made that corridor safer because we have taken a lot of people off of that corridor recently. So I, I know, I, I know that we would like to speed that process up, but, but the, the, the taking our time and doing it thoroughly with the right answers along the way will really pay dividends in the end.
Thank you, Dole. Counselor Wolf?
Budgeted to pay that? Um, I don't know if it's a business or a nonprofit agency, uh, the group that dismantles homeless camps and then they charge the city for it. Do we have money budgeted to help clean up our camps?
Yes, there's, in the police department's budget and under professional services, ten thousand is designated for that, for that agency, that group, uh, to keep Colorado Springs beautiful.
And that's substantially more, and that was even before the fire. We increased that, uh, over the last couple of years. We've only spent about four to eight hundred a year. Is that correct, Becca?
Right. I think there was one year, twenty-five hundred was spent, but the past couple of years, we haven't, we've, uh, have not spent even two thousand. So, uh, increasing it to ten thousand for twenty-twenty-one is a substantial increase.
Do you know if the city has ever asked for reimbursement for those expenses from whomever owned the property that we cleaned up for them?
I think the properties that we've cleaned up have tended to be our own. So, um, I don't recall.
We've asked for, if we clean up graffiti or other things, if we don't get it first, we will lean the property. So we have done now.
Right, for graffiti.
You can do that with our camps, too?
You can do that.
Thank you.
We've got Mr. Chaney back.
Right, you're back.
Right, so I, I believe it was Counselor Wolf, I think you had the question, so maybe if you could restate your question?
No, you're kidding.
No, it wasn't that.
No, I was, I was answering Mr. Shada. Uh, I was ask, I was gonna ask him if he thought, since the TMMP has a pedestrian safety aspect to it, um, and we have, um, some money in there, uh, if, if some signs and painting some kind of walking path temporarily there could be beneficial and having some kind of flashing warning sign. I know we don't want really flashing signs up there. I know there's been some, but if it's a pedestrian safety issue, we may want something that is warning people in that corner when they come around where the pedestrians are coming down. Do you think that would be effective if we try to find some solution like that for a temporary means of safety?
No, I don't think so. I'm still going to pitch for that we do the survey in that area first and we get some improvements in there ASAP. Okay, flashing lights, signs and whatnot. I said I walk that five times a day, all right? I watch almost every single day. There's somebody who comes in with a hair of their life, okay, on that corner. All right, regardless of what we do with some long-range study that goes on and on and on and millions of dollars, we're gonna end up having pedestrians there, okay? That is going to be a fact of life. And I do not see why we cannot get that surveyed, get that delineated so that that is top of the thing so that we can begin literally before next summer, if possible, as a goal, pouring some kind of contract, con, country. I do not want to wait until twenty twenty-four for some kind of improvement in that area.
I guess my, my thought on this would be to suggest, uh, we've got a little bit of time here. I believe it's, uh, the seventeenth when we'll look at first reading of the budget. So we've got about three weeks. Perhaps, um, city staff could entertain some sort of quick, perhaps a temporary, perhaps, uh, you know, permanent fix to that area. Give me a chance to take a look at it. Would, would that be acceptable to you, John, or?
I would like that very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and, and, and Dole, you've got your hand raised. What?
Sir Shada, what, what, uh, we're getting into details since the engineer and me. Uh, just real quick, what is the movement that you see? Your car's coming down the hill and pedestrians going up the hill that you see as the, as the major potential conflict?
Okay, starting at Pilot Knob, all the way around the corner, okay, to the start of Winter Street, okay? There is no delineated sidewalk. That is a blind corner, okay, all right? Trucks, buses, all sorts of traffic next summer is going to accelerate going around that corner, okay? We're, we're, I, I just do not see why, it doesn't make any difference whether we vary power lines, do fiber optic and do all these wonderful things that go out until twenty twenty-four, why we cannot do a delineated sidewalk in that area. There's gonna be one in that area. And it seems like to me, we can ask the surveyor to figure out what the property situations are right there so that we can get on top of that ASAP.
I can look into that.
Yeah, and, yeah, that's, it's one of the interesting problems we have, the Ruxton corridor. There's a, that's a huge granite boulder there, so.
Yes.
That's part of the problem.
I think that there potentially will be some, and you may not like this term, but there may be some lower hanging fruit that we can confidently implement sooner than later on out there.
Okay, well, Yank, if you could take a look at that and maybe the next couple of weeks, give us a little direction, that would be great. Counselor Wolf?
Thanks. Uh, this is a question for John Shada. Would it, would Nancy's suggestion make that place safer temporarily until we get a sidewalk? Nancy mentioned about those goofy poles, you know, like they have in front of the cliff house.
And my comment about those goofy poles are, there are, those are over there on the Park Avenue Bridge and half of them are all gone, okay? Not even a blind corner, okay? I have no idea.
Oh, that is a blind corner.
John, talk.
That's not a blind corner at the Park Avenue Bridge, okay? You go over.
Yes, it is.
Okay, Johnny has the floor.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the little white things. I'm not talking about making the left-hand turn there, Julie.
Delineators.
I'm just talking about those things are there and it's plenty wide and they're, half of them are all knocked down. It's all gonna take one person to go around that corner with a bus and they're gonna collect all of those things, boom, 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 boom. Just all in one, in one, in one thing. And that's why I'm going after the pitch I'm going after.
Okay, thank you.
Good, it sounds like, uh, Dole's gonna take a look at that and hopefully, maybe we'll have a little, little more direction here in the next couple of weeks. Okay. All right.
Can I ask Dole a question before he goes away?
Sure, go ahead.
Dole, hey, I don't know if this is your department exactly, but, um, when you're pulling out of Park Avenue right there at the bridge and you're, and, and you're gonna take a left on Manitou Ave going east? Very hairy. First of all, and I know, I tell the city every year and they try to keep up with it, but that huge bush always gets too big. And then that parking spot, that is the very last parking spot before, uh, on the, um, oh God, what side is that? On the north side of the street, that parking spot right there. If there's a truck or something, you can't tell. You just have to inch your way. So you're halfway into the lane before you can see if anyone's coming. And then you just hope they're going slow enough that they don't fashion to you.
I think that's part of the MAPS project, right, Dole?
Uh, no, the MAPS job will have stopped before that. And I, I do see, I do see the point there. I do think, and this is similar to the Pilot Knob area, is you have as much of a sight distance issue as anything. You know, like up on Ruxton, the trees and, and vegetation are so flush up against the edge of the roadway that you can't really see a car until it's around the corner. And I think to that, you know, to the comment about the bush, I think if that bush, I, I, I'm just looking at Google Street View here. Um, if you're a low car, I can see how that bush could blind your view to that.
I'm in an SUV and I, blinds me.
And you're still blinded, okay, so that.
Yeah, I'm not in a low car.
Okay, so that bush clearly gets, so, so that, that may need to be a, that, that bush may need to be swapped out for something lower or may need to be actively pruned a few times a year. Uh, uh, I'm happy to look at that, too. Sight distance is, is, uh, real important.
Thanks, Dole, that, that would be appreciated.
Sure.
Okay, back to budget questions. Um, do we have anything else anymore? I think, starting off, it seemed like most council members were pretty content with the answers they'd gotten. So I guess I will say if there's nothing else, I would, I see Denise has her hand raised.
I just want to wrap up this to make sure that we have everything down. Um, Mountain Metro, we're gonna reach out to them and see what the process is. The parking fees, we will be bringing that in November with our, with our total fee schedule, so you can discuss it at that time. Uh, Dole's gonna look at the Ruxton in that area that, um, Counselor Shada discussed, so we'll be looking at that. The reservation system is an operational system, and so Roy's gonna look at that and what that looks like and implementation. And if that is a, the pros and the cons, because there could be some cons with it. Let's see. I believe that's all that I've written down. Is that correct?
Seems like a pretty comprehensive list, yeah. It's a pretty good homework assignment, really. Good.
Back with you on those. Thank you.
Okay, so council, let's see, I believe it's, um, November the seventeenth, we discussed the budget on first reading. And then we would have second reading, um, in December, I believe, December the first. Is that correct, Denise?
Right.
Yeah, so, um, do y'all feel that, uh, we've hashed out the budget sufficiently so that we can cover it in those two remaining meetings, or do you feel like we need to have more, more detail? Anybody feel like we need, and we've got some answers pending, obviously, but if we could get those back saying in a couple of weeks, you think we'd be on track or do we need to schedule something else?
We'll have, we'll have the answers back probably within a week.
Okay, good. I don't, I don't see any great, uh, swell to have additional meetings, so I think we can go ahead and plan on sticking with our schedule. Okay, well, I would propose that we've, uh, gotten through that discussion point tonight and then we can move on. So, Dole, thank you for attending. We appreciate it. It's helpful. And Becca, also, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, so next item of business, um, standard fare, receiver act on council correspondence. Who would like to go first? A little slow week. Go, Councilman Brum, yeah, you've got a lot to say.
Okay, uh, first of all, I'd like to comment a little bit on Hiawatha Gardens. I've received some emails from constituents. And since the Hiawatha Gardens is actually in my ward, uh, and the emails I received were in appreciation of, of how, uh, I voted and the mayor, and Susan Wilbrook voted last week on, uh, we were in the minority, but we, we were more in favor of, uh, condemning the building as in concentrate on the library instead. And so I've received some correspondence on that. Uh, the other issue, which we've already addressed a little bit, is the, uh, illegal encampments. And I've received a lot of support from people, my neighbors, uh, people around, who are affected by that bar trail fire, because we live right next to it. And they're very concerned and they're very interested in, in what we're gonna do, you know, for the future as far as uh, preventing that from happening in the future. That's all.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. We appreciate that. Uh, Counselor Wilbrook, please?
Thank you. Um, I've also gotten some Hiawatha Gardens, um, correspondence as well. And I think that, um, as we go into first and second reading, anything we can do to help maybe help our citizens understand a little bit about capital improvements, or if there's any, that, that part of the budget that Nancy Fortune mentioned earlier tonight, I think, um, if there's even something that maybe Alex could possibly do, just to point people, uh, where that is. I have had some, you know, people ask for more detail about that. Um, I have a question from some of my neighbors. Are we doing a food drive in, it, next week, or is there a November food drive? Do we know?
It's out here. Let me go looks.
Well, she goes and looks for that. I'm gonna remind everybody that November tenth is our next blood drive and I'll send an email out about that. Um, also, right now, Safeway at Red Rock Shopping Center is doing their Turkey Bucks program and it benefits the Thanksgiving, um, meal that, uh, is put on in conjunction with, I believe it's Andy Wells and Partners, along with the Salvation Army. It's gonna be more of a drive-through pickup thing this year, but there's a huge need and, you know, it's quite the tradition in town. So the next time you're in Safeway, they're gonna ask you, um, when you, you know, well, if not, if you do self-checkout, but if you don't do self-checkout, they ask you about Turkey Bucks where you can contribute an amount on, at the end of your bill. And I just wanna remind all of council and everyone listening that this is a easy way to contribute to that program and that Thomas Nelson does a great job. He's the general manager there of really supporting Manitou. Um, and he's been really great, I think, through COVID on, on many, many levels. And, um, I just want to make sure that you guys know that those Turkey Bucks were, you know, will go directly to Manitou. And I think that's most of what I have this week that hasn't been covered by someone else.
So the food drive is, um, twelve thirty to one thirty on Tuesday, the third. And Alex, thanks for sending that to me. So it's.
So that's on the day as well.
Yep, that's on election day, twelve thirty to one thirty.
Thank you, Denise. Okay.
Thank you. Great. Counselor Chandler, would you like to go next?
Certainly. Uh, so, first of all, I would like to, um, give a shout out to everyone who's been involved with the Beehive. We were able to elect our first Board of Directors, which is, um, a requirement for achieving five oh one C three status. And we had, um, of the seven positions available, we had six very qualified people step up to the plate. In the future, we'll do elections, but in the interest of getting, um, our bank account set up, our IRS account, um, we needed to. we needed to move quickly. So kudos to everyone who stepped up to the plate. I just want to say that I'm just amazed that Aspen Point came on board September 22nd. So in the month, in, in one month, we have achieved putting an executive directorship together, a board of directors. Tessa is coming on, on board next month. We just have to, to finalize the MOU and restorative justice is, is waiting in the wings. And then we are going to set, we are formulating a community survey to ask the residents that above and beyond what the police department is offering, is going to offer in their proposal, what the community wants. And then we'll have a community meeting in December. It might be a Zoom meeting and then in January, start robustly putting together some more initiatives in conjunction with the library that will most likely be opening at the MAC soon. So that's that. And I also just want to, this is my first budget cycle and as a freshman, I just wanted to say how amazed I am at the finance department and all the departments for coming together with such an amazing thing for us to, I've been sleeping on my notebook because I read a section. So, you know, he said red on my face. So that said, I just also want to give a shout out to the city for this, during the snow, I had a pipe freeze on Monday and I wasn't able to attend OSAC. And I know OSAC discussed the homeless camp situation too, but we had a pipe freeze, so we had to relocate from our house to somewhere else because we had no water and couldn't flush toilets. So, but we're back in the house and ready to move on. So I don't know what happened at OSAC, but I'm sorry that I missed that. I think that's it for me, thanks a lot.
Councillor Chandler. Mr. Shada, do you have anything?
I'm sorry, enough talking tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you, alrighty. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, a couple of things. The URA is going to be dedicating their parklet with the eagle, I think it's on the 29th. John, do you, I know you have a small part at that.
Yeah, it is the 29th at 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
So it's Thursday.
Yeah, they're not encouraging a lot of participation because of COVID, but it should be a nice, nice ceremony anyway. The match, the Arts and Match Board is met last week and you may have seen Becca, they, through Becca, they put out a really nice communication to the community on some of the expectations, the training that's going to be done, some of the dates to anticipate and so on. So they continue to make really good progress. The Hiawatha Gardens Task Force met last week, reconvened last week for the first time since, I don't know, February or something. They're coming up with a communication plan and looking at the, what the membership is or can, might be. From constituents, I've gotten questions about pollution in Manitou, air quality with all the wood fires and so on and so on. So I'm trying to get more information on that, more to follow on that. But I have a couple of people contacted me about that with concerns. And lastly, apparently last week, and I, who knows what happened? But apparently Sutherland Creek was running red. I don't know if it was, I, I, I suspect that there was something going on up in Crystal Park where they released water and it was probably just red dirt, but I need to get more information on that and get back with them. The, the, if, if you haven't figured out, Sutherland Creek runs right through my ward and there's a lot of ownership over that creek. So lots of concerns is here, which I have, this is the first year that I've heard concerns about it. So, anyway, that's all I've got, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Wolf?
Well, I too got emails commending me and accusing me for my vote on Hiawatha. So perspectives on both sides about that. I did get someone to ask me how to join the Hiawatha Task Force or if there will be a Hiawatha Task Force or if you just sign up or, so maybe Nancy could enlighten me on that so I can have better information. And I think that's it for me.
Okay, great, thank you, Councillor Wolf. Okay, I don't really have much anything else that hasn't already been covered, except I did want to get your take on something. The Tuesday, the, the 24th of November, that's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. I would propose that we try to avoid having a meeting on that since, you know, some people like to travel and stuff for the holidays and it's just a busy week. We do have a couple of topics that have, that have come up that really kind of deserve council's attention in work session. And that would be the, the homeless camps. I think the, the chief had originally planned for maybe the 10th, the 10th is a fairly busy night already. So the illegal encampments. And then Mr. Cheney has proposed a slight modification to the incline MOU. And I think it basically is just changing the hours to reduce the time. Those are two topics that we could, we should probably discuss in a work session. I'm wondering if it would make sense to maybe have a, an extra session earlier in the month, like say on the 5th, November the 5th, that would be a Thursday or the 12th, most typically are Thursdays. We, I don't think we have conflicts with other city board meetings, but I'd like to run that past you and see what your take is. The alternative would be to, you know, to have a longer meeting earlier in the month. So do we have, like, is there any feedback at the moment? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, my preference would be the 5th. I think the 10th is going to, that's all the boards and commissions and some others on budget stuff. And I just think that that's going to be, my, my brain is already hurting thinking about it. So, and I think the chief's reporting on the fire mitigation and illegal encampments is going to be a, has a potential to be a heavy topic. So I would, my, my personal, because I do have the match meeting on the 12th, so the 5th would be my preference, thanks.
Councillor Wilbrook, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, I have a Thursday night conflict, so I mean, my preference would be to have a longer meeting on a Tuesday. I don't know if that'll gain any traction. I also do agree that not having a meeting on the 24th is a good idea. But I suppose, you know, if I'm the only person who has a Thursday conflict, we can, you know, might work around that, I suppose.
We have two subjects, I guess we, if we tried to, added one, one topic to each of the existing meetings, we could, we could get that done. To, I actually, next week though, the 3rd, we want to, we're going to start at 5 o'clock next week because that's election night, we're going to have two topics and we're going to try to get in and out pretty quickly. We talked about that previously, so, okay.
Can I ask a question about, you know, the new civic clerk software that we're using instead of Novus? I may need to come in and get some training from the city clerk's office, but I can't see future agendas, am I just missing something?
I had that same, I had that same problem too.
Yeah. Look out and see, like, as a matter of fact, I'm going to ask you tonight for next Tuesday, will you remind me what those two topics are? And I tried to look that up before, you know, multiple times this week and I, I just don't know if Judy Morgan has an answer for me, but I don't think I can see that.
You should be able to, but it sounds like it's a problem that multiple people are having. So we will definitely look into that and we can send out information on that via email on what's going on with that. But next week is the 3rd and that's the, the two public hearings that we have.
It's the Beckers, the facilities on Beckers and it's the food truck.
Sun Water Spa, so, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, Councillor Chandler?
I apologize, I did want to say one more thing about in council correspondence and that is regarding Hiawatha Gardens. So thank you for reminding me to bring that up. I joined the task force and we had a meeting last week and I, I too got quite a bit of correspondence, both pro and con regarding the Hiawatha Gardens building. And I, I just would like to reach out to the residents and citizens of Manitou and say that this is a really amazing group of people and we, we know what we're tasked with. And one of the things that we discussed, one of the first items of business we discussed was taking another look at the structural soundness of the building. And we are not opposed to coming back to the citizens of Manitou and saying the building is not safe and it's not, we're really not, it's too, it's cost prohibitive to, to keep it. But I do also want to say to the citizens that I, I am really happy that we're taking this last look at it so that we know beyond a shadow of a doubt moving forward. So I would just like to reassure, reassure the citizens of Manitou that we are not just a group of people that are really, you know, hell-bent on restoring the building, because if it's not sound, we will recommend that it be demolished. That's all I've got, thanks.
Great, thank you. Going back to the thought of moving, you know, having a, an extra meeting, say on the, on the 5th of November or the 12th, something like that, if I could get, get a little more feedback. We've had Mayor Protem and Councillor Wilbrook out of the rest of you, Mr. Bremner? Steve?
Yes, I'm in favor of Thursday, the 5th.
Thursday, the 5th, okay. Councillor Wolf? How do you feel about?
Thursday, the 5th is fine with me. I did want to ask you though, if you could clarify, did you say that council meeting starts at 5 on Tuesday? Or is that just a proposal? Oh, it's a definite?
That's the plan, that, we, we talked about that last week, yeah, so I mean.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that had nothing to do with the Thursday decision, but I'm fine with Thursday.
Okay, Thursday, the 5th would work for you, okay?
With Thursday, the 5th, also, would that meeting start at 6:00 PM?
Yeah, be the normal, yeah, 6, 6:00 PM time, yeah.
As well.
Okay. Councillor Shada?
I'm fine with that as well.
Okay, and I'm fine with it, so. Councillor Wilbrook, it looks like we've got, got six in favor of the 5th, that presents a problem for you. I'm sorry, you're muted, Susan.
Sorry, well, I mean, there's not much I can do about that, it's just one of those things. So, I mean, whether or not I can move what I have on that night, I can't tell you tonight, unfortunately. It's kind of sprung on me tonight, so, but I, I can email you guys and let you know, but, you know, it's either I can make it or I can't. That's just the way it is and that's okay.
We, we understand, okay, great, thank you. Thank you very much, okay, so.
Mayor, if we moved it up, would that help? Susan, if we moved it up a little bit earlier, would that help if everybody?
Can, can I get back with the other board that I serve on and, and, and just, you know, they really were trying to make things happen on Tuesday nights and I, I had to put my foot in the ground and say, you've known from the beginning, I can't do Tuesday nights. And if I go back to them now and go, oh, I can't do Thursdays either, I just, I, I'm sorry. But I'll need to communicate with them now that I know about this and I, I'll get back to you via email. I appreciate that though, I really do.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Councillor Wilbrook. Alrighty, so we will plan on having, this will be a work session meeting on the 5th, tentatively starting at 6:00 PM. So we'll do that, we'll have two topics and we'll get that done. And then we, we would plan not to meet on the 24th of November, that's the, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, so we take that night off. Okay, great, all right, let's get on to the city administrator's report.
So the Parks and Facility Study, our group that's coming down to look at all our parks and facilities are going to take a look at Hiawatha on Thursday, just to let you know, they're sending down a structural engineer and a historical expert to look at it. So we should have that information for the task force by next Wednesday, I believe is our meeting. So that'll be helpful for them. And number two is the Transportation Parking Board had their meeting today and they agreed to change their name to the Mobility and Parking Board, so MAP. So we're going to focus on mobility and parking, not just parking. So that's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you. Denise?
Well, as you heard me say earlier, I just want to really recognize staff and especially public works. The last couple of weeks has been hard, they've worked a lot of long hours due to water main breaks. And then we had the snowstorm that came on top of it. So many of them were going with 15, 16-hour workdays and I really want to shout out to them. They really dedicate their time and they're committed to making sure that we get, today I went up there and I said, you need to take a break and they're like, no, we got to get the water on. And they literally did not have anything to eat until 2:30 this afternoon, they went without breakfast and without lunch. So I really want to shout out to them, they're doing a great job. And then I do want to say this week I've had, met with several people and it was an exciting week because everybody I met with has complimented parking in all aspects of the city and they're saying they're really starting to see things happen. And it was fun to hear that. So I really just, the staff, I cannot say enough positive things about all that they're doing and we're really starting to implement all the studies and everything that has been put in place. So that is fun to hear. And other than that, I just want to say I did attend OSAC last night, Councillor Chandler. And it's, all the, the boards are doing also just great work. I watched the match, I attend the MAC, I attend OSAC. And it's just fun to really watch people start moving forward and getting things done and the excitement that I see, so that's it.
Well, I think we've pretty well cleared our plate off tonight, the only remaining piece of business is adjournment and.
Mayor, I've got one thing that I do want to announce, we do have a virtual budget meeting on Thursday. So we do have a virtual budget meeting for the residents there, it's a Zoom meeting, it's on Facebook, it's on everywhere. We would love for people to attend and we're going to go through the budget with anybody that would like to do it at that time.
And they can get the link by going to the city website.
In Facebook, so yes.
Mayor, can I add one more council correspondence that just came in tonight while we're here? It's very brief, it's GFL and we got some council correspondence about the fact that, you know, they didn't necessarily pick up everywhere today. I did want to mention that they did send me an email yesterday saying they weren't sure they were going to pick up today, that they would do their best, if not, they would do it the rest of the week. And I would just remind our community that we have an ordinance in place that requires that we have a single caller. And we went through this process earlier in the year. And I think that given our choices and the ordinance that we have in place, we made the best decision we could. But, but that doesn't mean that in the future, we can't look at this differently or similarly. But I understand the frustration, but I was pleased to see GFL give us a warning yesterday that they might not pick up today. That was the first time that happened, that is progress. Is it enough? I can't answer that question tonight. Just wanted to touch on that while everybody who is watching this meeting or will be reading the bulletin on Thursday will be probably having some same questions as former councilman Shannon Solomon is the one who sent us that this evening.
Okay, and they did send it out last night and then they also posted it on their Facebook stating that they would be, they would not, they weren't sure that they were going to make it today and a part of it was just the snowstorm and the, the condition of the roads.
Couple of hands raised, I think Nancy was first and then we'll do Jillie.
Yeah, I just, I, I got that email as well last night. But I would also like to remind the community that if they don't come out, you still need to secure your trash cans. The bears are still out, they're still very hungry. And it only takes one time for a bear to be successful, it will come back to that area up to 30 times, according to CPW. So that, we have an ordinance on that as well. So it, our, our community is between a rock and a hard place sometimes on that, but I, I just wanted to remind folks of that issue, thanks.
Good, thank you, thank you.
Oh, I just wanted to, since people do shout outs, you know, I'm not usually a shout out person. I wanted to give a shout out to Steve Bremner. What amazing work he's done, amazing, getting the inclined people to partner with him and clean up all that stuff in the freezing cold, where the heck up there? And jeez, I mean, I just thank you so much, Steve. I could thank you privately, but I think in this situation, you deserve a, a public acknowledgement for going above and beyond. So kudos to you and for keeping all of us safer, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, well said, Julie. Thank you, Steve. Great. Okay. All that said, if there's no objection, I would propose we adjourn, call it a night. Okay. Thanks, everybody. Have a nice evening.